And he's 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 for yeah, everyone knows he's working on this. Yeah. 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 But yeah, he's still, yeah, his legacy doesn't lie. Right. It's not emerged, but not Yeah. No. No. Push out a beer. Yep. Uh. Is that, I didn't hear it. I heard it. I heard it. It's it's then I didn't That yours? No. Hmm. Here. Just so I can use it. Yeah. Sure. Very. Why not? So, yeah, so it's right. Yes. Somebody left that up here, but it wasn't me. Yeah. Well, I could take off that. Yeah. It's Jim. He'll be online. There he is. Possibly. Oh. Yeah. Yeah. Somewhere, I don't know the details. This is Fine. Charlie's got a bug. So you want to share it so she can go to virtually and please. Yes. Well.
I'm in Sun River. It's ninety-three degrees.
Then there, then I was cool for a while. Yeah. I have to tell you. I still see other kids. Yeah. And actually, I think they just went on a trip somewhere. North. I think she was gone last week. Um. Bob, I'm going to I'm asking. I'll see it. I'm going to uh something to be like, like oh, someone Yeah. And sure. I think in front. Places running. That's there. Yeah. I've been God. Great. He's been in a place. Now I could go like first time. I need to do about the best since I've been Yeah. That's fair. Yeah. So student. Yeah. Right. And you are and you guess. I'm gonna right. Okay. Is Eric is Eric concerned about that? Uh. We'll find out. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. From ready sitting like what's that you said? Right. Oh, I probably should be. I'm not there yet. Uh. You having trouble? They just I normally do. But there's three or both. So they're about eight. It's all happened. They're being on call. Yeah. Like that. And they're spent. Yeah. 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 Or where's Jack? You all want? Yeah. John. You must got need to roll. Yeah. Yeah. Need to roll. Done. You're one minute long. Thank you. Okay, so we get Charlie and Jay online. And then I don't know how I'm going to put. We'll figure it out. All right. Don't forget to speak directly into your microphones. And are we ready to start the recording, Janine? I'd like to welcome you on Call to Order, the August twelfth, twenty twenty-five Port Orchard Regular Council Meeting. And also would like to remind us of our guiding principles and the actions we're about to take this evening. Are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections with our community and site partners? And is the decision-making process building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, Susan, the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which the same is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice held. So, hi. Yeah. But published agenda, are there any proposed amendments? Morrissey?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I propose we pull item four H off of consent and move it to business item eight F.
Second that.
Okay, bit more motion by Councilor Morrissey, second by Councilmember to move consent item H to business item F. All in favor? Please say aye. 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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent item has been moved to business. Any other proposed amendments? Is there a motion for, I think, Councilman Morris?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Morrissey, a second by Councilmember Ternary to approve the agenda as it's been amended. All in favor? Please say aye. 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 Anyone opposed? We have the agenda set for this evening. We're at our first citizen comment period. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time? Anyone online wishing to address the council, use the raise your hand feature and the clerk will bring you into the meeting. And we've tested our equipment and we know that it works. Which I'm good. We're having technical difficulties last meeting. Right? Hearing none, I'll close the first citizen comment period. We have a published consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second. Motion by Councilmember Deener, second by Councilmember Fenton to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor? Please say aye.
Mayor. Mayor. Oh, not mayor. Yes. So. Point point of order, I believe it would be the consent agenda as amended.
You are correct. I saw that. Yes. As amended, that is correct. Thank you, sir, for that correction. So we motion in this, the motion maker and the second concur? Yes. All right. We, you'll be voting to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor? Please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Uh. Hearing none, the consent agenda has passed. We're two, moving right along here. We're to our presentation. We've got Jim Rockland and James Weaver from the Port of Bremerton. They're here to dazzle us with all the wonderful things going on at the Port of Bremerton.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. You can eat. Yeah. Bring you up. So I'm Jim Rothlin. I'm the CEO of the Port of Bremerton. I did bring, uh, our Marina Director, James Weaver, for two reasons. Um, tomorrow's his last day, so I'm just going to squeeze every hour out of him that I can. So hey. And also, of course, a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that are happening here at Port Orchard, um, James is going to have the details to kind of help you get through it. So I'm looking over here. And do I have a clicker or you're gonna? Okay. Uh, so just kind of want to start with, uh, the mission of the port. A lot of people don't really know exactly what we do. And in a nutshell, it's about increasing the economic opportunity for all of Kitsap County by generating jobs, developing infrastructure, and improving the local quality of life. So, you know, primarily, we're trying to help the economy here, but we're also looking at improving the local quality of life, which, um, you know, I've been at this port for about ten years and probably more than any other port. Port of Bremerton spends a lot of time and energy on that. Um, and because this is a great place to be. And so it's really important that no matter what we're doing, as we're developing, as we're growing, we want to make sure we maintain that. Yeah. Um, and these are three, the, uh, Commissioners, uh, Gary Anderson, who's part of this district, Kerry Bozeman and Axel Strekeljohn, uh, three people who are very experienced in their own areas of expertise and, um, have a lot of great ideas, a lot of support, a lot of good vision. So they're primarily, like most commissions, their job is to help set strategy, to help set the vision, to help, um, approve the budget. And then, um, as we move forward, they approve things as they go. And of course, they hire me as the CEO and my job is to run the port based on their vision, um, based on their budget. And we really have, I would call, three lines of business. We look at the Marina, which includes our marinas, our breakwaters, our piers, our boat launches, our parks. And then another division is the airport and then the industrial park. So I'll kind of break it down in those three as we move forward. Um, before I do that, as I talk about their goals and their mission on economic development, this was a study that was done about six years ago to, to just kind of see what impact does the port actually have on its local community? So, um, can't quite read it from here, but I know in Kitsap County alone, there's about one point two billion dollars in sales that happen from tenants of the port. So it's a pretty big number, about fifty-four hundred or something like that, jobs. About half of them are direct jobs within the port. So there's really some, uh, great things that have been happening there. And we're doing a new economic impact study this year, so we'll see what those numbers look like. Um, just some background. Uh, we were voted in as the Washington Port Association Job Creator of the Year. You can see the increases that were being done in those five or six years and, um, where we doubled the number of tenants in the industrial park and almost tripled the number of jobs there. And that really comes from, you know, the economy is doing this all the time and our job is to make sure we're ready for it. So when things are slow, we're not waiting, we're building, we're putting in infrastructure. Because when people want to move, they don't want to wait for all the permits and everything to get in place they need to move. So, you know, all they need is the final building permit to go. So it really has helped, um, make that successful. And then in twenty twenty-three, at the end of twenty twenty-three, we were voted in the Washington Port Association Port of the Year. So that's quite an honor. There's, you know, forty-seven ports out there. And so to win that honor, it's not just jobs, but it's all the creative things that we're doing. Um, so the Commissioners should be proud of that. So that's kind of their report card. Okay, so I'll start talking about the marinas and start at Bremerton. Um, Bremerton has about three hundred and twenty slips, two hundred and twenty are permanent mortgage, meaning we rent those month to month. And then we leave a hundred as guest mortgage so that people can come and visit on the weekends and things like that. Um, that was done in about two thousand and eight when it was built, the, the new Marina. And, um, when they started, they were about forty percent capacity. About ten years ago, we went on this, um, marketing terror where we were going to boat shows and saying, you rent here for a year, we'll give you another year free. And the purpose was, we, people did not know about this area. We thought if we can just get them here and they like it, they're more than likely going to stay. And that paid off. We're now in the summertime, close to ninety percent capacity at most times. Um, some of the development that we've done there recently or in the last several years, um, this was the parking lot that the port purchased when they bought that Marina because they needed parking for the Marina. Uh, the big issue for me was really to have land that's waterfront property that's parking only. So we spent many years trying to find the right developer. And we really hit on one, these people have done things throughout the United States, but they're based, they're from Bremerton, that's their home. So it was important to them, not just to build something that was going to make them a lot of money, but also something that was going to help their community. So it kind of went from this picture here. And then the next picture is kind of shows their development of what they did. So this was about a two hundred million dollar investment. There's about two hundred and seventy-five apartments in there. Um, they're now starting to use some of them as hotels. Um, uh, down below is retail and office space. In fact, some of them have, the office is the front door and then you go behind the office and there's actually an apartment behind there. So it's done really well. Um, they've got a store in there right now, like a little grocery store. They're putting in a restaurant to be coming soon. And you can see how it's split, so it really invites everybody to the waterfront. Okay. And then one of the reasons that we bought that was for parking, so it was important that we kept that parking. So in part of the sale of the property, we turned around and bought seventy-five of the parking stalls. Um, there's three hundred and eighty-five stalls in tot- in total, but seventy-five are still dedicated to the Marina boaters. So it was a real win-win. Um, another thing that happens, um, a few years back, the American Cruise Lines came in and this was kind of an interesting story. They, they, these, uh, cruise lines tour about eleven different locations in Puget Sound. We were not one of them when they started. Olympia was, um, and they went to Olympia to tie up and there's union workers there that wanted to tie the boat. And the, the cruise line says, no, we need to do it. The, um, union people says, you're not doing it. James gets a call and says, uh, can we, can we come to Bremerton? And we said, certainly. So they came here and they did eight stops that year. And I think now they're at forty-plus stops here. And so they continue to grow. It's a great partnership. They come in, it's, um, you know, anywhere from, um, eighty passengers to a hundred and twenty passengers. They stay for twenty-four hours and these people have, most of them are not from Washington State. They're from all over the place. They've never been to the Pacific Northwest. So they stay here, um, they see the Turner Joy, they, they, they come across on the foot ferry and come over here on this side. I know they take a tour to that bonsai nursery and they have different tours set up to kind of make it happen. So it's been a real success story for us. Okay, Port Orchard Marina, um, a little bit bigger, it's four hundred and forty-one slips, but the same thing, three hundred and forty-one are permanent mortgage and then about a hundred are guest mortgage. This one's always been easier to fill. Number one, um, you've got covered mortgage, which is a, a long waiting list of people that we couldn't do at Bremerton. Um, number two, the, the, the tide that comes in and out of here is a little bit easier for people to come in and out. So, um, it's been pretty easy to fill most of the time. Yeah. Um, our biggest project is that big blue breakwater around the Port Orchard Marina. That's about fifteen hundred linear feet. Um, it's about a sixteen million dollar project to do. Typically, they tell you breakwaters have a twenty-five to thirty-year lifespan and I think we're hitting fifty, uh, right now with this thing. So with maintenance and repair as much as we could, we were keeping it together as we were trying to find the funding for it. Um, we've always said we're one big storm from losing that breakwater. And it's not a good thing because you lose the breakwater, then you're, you're shutting down your Marina. And that Marina brings in about sixteen million dollars to, um, the Port Orchard community, um, just in the people that are there and the jobs that it brings in. So it's really important to us, but also important to the community. So we finally, um, last year found a way to get the money. Um, you go ahead and go to the next slide. Uh, it would like to say sixteen million dollars. Uh, we've gotten about nine and a half million from the federal grant. And then the state kicked in another five million. Um, Kitsap Transit is making a promise to do a million dollars and then the rest is the port. So luckily, this thing has become affordable and we're moving forward on the project. Um, you'll start seeing some movement on this, um, the beginning of next year at some point. And it'll take about a year between fish windows to get that done. So the great part was, this was part of a federal raise grant. And at about the same time, the, um, people were doing a tour in the northwest of all the places that they had given these grants. And they decided Port Orchard was where they were going to do their media, um, event. So we had the ribbon cutting, we had all these people here. Buttigieg was the transportation, uh, Vice President or Director. And then we had Kilmer here, Cantwell Murray, uh, everybody was here, the tribe. And so it's kind of a nice kickoff event. Uh, another project, we called it Bay Street Remediation Project. Uh, we agreed to purchase this from a, uh, private person. And, um, we knew the problems were going to be, this used to be a gas station there. And so there's going to be some fuel issues. We didn't know exactly to what extent. But the nice part about ports is we can get funding for these kind of things where private sector couldn't. This guy was never going to be able to sell this to private sector. It's, you know, how much the total we're putting into this?
One.
Yeah. Well, that's just the environmental part.
That's environmental.
Okay, so yeah. So at one point, you know, in remediation to this, it, it includes digging out the tanks, um, testing the soils, digging things out, working with ecology, uh, testing the soils, we'll be doing that for a while to make sure that the soils get to where they are. So, um, it'll kind of stay as it is, um, for two to three years while we do the testing. We're going to use it as a laydown place when they start putting in the breakwater. Uh, we may use it for some parking if that works, um, just temporary parking. And then from there, uh, we had a retreat last week and we have no set decisions on what's going to happen, but we're seeing what's happening to the left and the right of us. And we just want to be a part of it. So we'll kind of see when it gets to that point, what's the highest and best use for the community.
Jim, are you guys at least able to fill the hole in that's there or do you need that hole open to do your testing?
Yeah, that gets filled soon.
Uh. You done that? There we go. All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Um, in the farmer's market, um, that's been around for a little while, but of course, this time we, we have now have the responsibility of make sure the parking and it all works. And we're glad we're finding a way to make it work, of course, with construction and everything. That was probably the biggest challenge, was just finding parking. But that market has just gotten better and better. And we'd love to make it larger, but we just can't do that yet and keep the parking that we need. But it's been very successful. They threw some numbers at us last year, if you want to go to the next slide. And, um, just showed from twenty-three to twenty-four, you know, the significant increases they did in vendor sales and in attendance and things like that. And, um, it's one of the, even from our perspective, when it comes to boaters coming to here and what, where we make our most revenue on visiting boaters, BlackBerry Festival, what's the other one?
Well, Bridge.
Yeah. Bridge Blast. And, um, this farmer's market is right in there with, with the value that we're getting out of it. So it's been good. Um, and just finally, you know, one of the things as we have these marinas, the tough part is how do you keep people here? And it's all about giving them things to do. And so our staff at the marinas are involved in about fifty-five different events throughout the year. We're, we're either participating in or we're actually running ourselves. So that takes up a lot of their time, um, besides the maintenance, you know, as water moves, everything breaks. And so they spend a lot of time doing that. This is a big piece of it and it's great, not just for the boaters, of course, but for the entire waterfront community. Um, so now I'll move on to the airport. So this airport, it's about a six thousand foot runway. Um, it can land up to about a seven thirty-seven and we get them once in a while, mostly military. Um, it has the ability to expand to seventy-two hundred feet, but that's something that is FAA regulated. They would only do it if we had specific reason to make it happen. And right now, we don't have that reason. So at six thousand, it works pretty well. Um, there are about a hundred and sixty-four hangars there. Most of them are general aviation. We've got ten corporate hangars that are in there. And, um, we, uh, have about a hundred and eighty-one aircraft that are there. There's about sixty-four thousand operations that happen in a year. So an operation is either a landing or a takeoff. So if someone lands and take off, that's, that's two operations. So fairly busy airport and I'll, I'll talk more about our plans for this in the future. Um, but also this just kind of shows the investment that these airports, they're not cheap. So in the last ten years, there's been twenty million dollars invested in this thing of all the things we have to do and maintain. Um, the good news is ninety percent of that gets funded through the FAA. And then another five percent is through the state, through their transportation program. So the port, as they're getting twenty million dollars, you know, increase in their assets, they're spending about, um, a hundred thousand dollars to do it. So it's a pretty good leverage of our funding. Um, couple of the projects that we're doing, this is the South Hangar Project. We're completely full at hangars. We've got a little spot there that we can add more. Um, it's going to be three corporate hangars and twenty general aviation hangars. You go to the next slide, it kind of shows a compilation. So that's what kind of looks like. The bigger ones, of course, are the, are the corporate hangars. Um, port, you know, we don't have resources to do all that. We just can't fund these things. Uh, but we do, we, we focus on the infrastructure and then we look for private sector to help us out. So we've put the infrastructure in and we now have leases for, um, all three corporate hangars where they're going to build their own hangar and then they'll lease the land from us. And then, um, once we get that done, we're currently working with another private developer to do the same thing with the general aviation hangars work. We'll put the, as much infrastructure as we can in, we'll work with them. And then it'll be his job to find people to, um, put in the hangars. Just another shot of it. Um, this is Airport Industrial Way. So this is about a four-mile road. Um, it basically connects Highway Three from one spot and then reconnects at another. So it makes a nice thorough, thoroughfare there. And it also opens up about fifteen hundred acres of industrial land for development. We're currently at the end of that green, that little circle part of the green, there is a roundabout. Um, and that's where we're at now. That's about two miles of it. And we're starting to work on the pink part right now, um, to get that done. So what we're doing now is just trying to develop the land, um, in, in the very, for the orange and the green stages. So here's one of the developments that we're looking at. It's called Sky Park and it's twenty-one acres, uh, designed for two fifty thousand square foot buildings and two twenty thousand square foot buildings. Um, it'll be the first, um, buildings that we have where people can have businesses, manufacturing, whatever they're going to do, but have direct access to the taxiway into the hangars. We don't have anything like that yet. And so we're hoping to make that happen. So uh, we are working with the private uh developer now who's doing kind of a s- uh, study, a feasibility study to figure out and determine what it's going to take for him to get this done. So he's got it for a year to determine if he wants to build this out or not. Um, that's just a picture of uh rendition of what it would look like. Um, of course, then Amazon built up on there. This is a last mile distribution center. It's about 120,000 square feet. Basically, I don't know if you're aware of it, but what they do at night, they bring semis in, they load that thing. And then during the day, the vans come in, they unload half of that building and deliver, and then they come in the afternoon and unload half of it and then deliver the rest. Um, one of the few distribution centers that we'll see out here, because when you're not on I five corridor, that's not really something people are looking for. But getting Amazon out here brought a lot of attention for other people. So that was really good. And and they're employing 250 people as well. Um, Radiant Aerospace is a another company that's out there. They're a next generation aerospace vehicle. Um, so reusable horizontal takeoff and landing uh that delivers people and light cargo to multiple destinations. So that's eventually what it's going to look like. These are ex Boeing people who are who are developing this. Um, dirt now they're doing the rocket testing here and the goal is that hopefully they do the manufacturing here. That's what we would really like to see. Typically, they do this in the desert somewhere, um, but they think they might be able to make it here. So. And then the airport diner, most of you have probably been there at one time or another. Um, it was just getting too expensive to maintain, so we had to take it down and there was just a desire to try and bring something back. So we had to work with FAA. Because if if you work with the FAA, if it's not building something that's flying a plane of some kind, they don't really want it there. So we did some tricky negotiations and um then put what we call the multipurpose facility. See on the next page here. So this is the Birmerton Airport Restaurant called Amelia's Hanger. Um, if you do the next slide, you'll see the backend. And so this is a, we call it a multipurpose facility. It has a hanger in there. You'll see the 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 green doors there. Um, has office space, it has pilot's lounge, um, and then has plane charging stations and that restaurant could technically be turned into a hanger if there was a need for it. So we were able to use that as a way to get that put back in. So um, they're having pretty good success right now. And the charging station is one of the first ones almost any airport has put in. Uh, we went underneath the restaurant before it got built. And then we've got a group who's be planning on using that soon. I think that might be the next slide. Uh, yes, Breberton Aviation Center for Education. So this is a group that is introduces aviation primarily to the youth. Um, it's got a flight simulator. They do seminars on flying, they do engineering. Um, they're currently in the process of constructing an airplane called a Xenos electronic motor glider. And they're doing all the cutting, the drilling, the riveting, everything necessary to take these thousands of pieces and turn it into a plane. They've actually got the first one built. You go to the next slide, I think it shows them uh working on it. And this was a, this was such a great idea that people started it and it was at first about five or six kids. And it has incl- now I think there's 45 kids in there right now and they finished building this plan. They're going to do another one. It's it's one of the few ways where any kids can even get introduced to airports and what they do. And you don't just have to be a pilot. You can do so many other things there. And this has really been pretty beneficial. We helped with these guys put scholarships together to do their pilot's license and things like that. So I think the next one, yeah. So that's a picture of the Xenos motor glider. It's completed. They're now getting it. You have to go to get it qualified through the FAA. So they had to take it somewhere to do some things, maybe test flights or whatever, but they're going to have their first official flight coming up soon. Uh, Birmerton Air Show, I don't know if you guys had a chance to come out there. This is something uh we started three years ago. We haven't done this for probably 30 years prior. We just found somebody who wants to do this and is good at it. And it's just been real successful the last three years. The first year we had 2,500 people. Last year we had about 9,000 and we think we could have got more. Um, but the weather was really hot and it just deterred a lot of people from coming. But our job is just to really help coordinate the the parking and some of the administrative things, but they have like 30 or 40 vendors there. It's really a fun event. And and if you're interested next year, I can hap- happily get you tickets to come. On Friday, they do a media day and uh they they kind of do their practice rounds to kind of see it. And then the the show is Saturday and Sunday. And then finally, the airport feasibility study, which I'm sure you've been listening about. So when I came on here, I think it was 11 years ago and I always heard people say, you should have a, you know, be able to fly out of here. And I had other people say, the last thing we wanted another C-TAC, you know, in my neighborhood, because I lived at C-TAC and it was horrible. So I really understood both points and I never really knew whether it made sense or not. And then when C-TAC was looking to expand, um, they had come to us and we didn't really say much. We just said, yeah, you can look at it. Um, I don't think it was any desire to be a C-TAC 2.0. Um, and then I did a tour of Payne Field. I don't know if you had a chance to go there, but when I saw that, I thought it was the first time I thought, that's something I think this community could live with. It's just easy. It's two gates. Uh, you know, six to 10 flights a day, non-intrusive parking, you can get in and out of there. You check in like you're checking in through somebody's living room. It really was kind of a neat little thing that possibly could work here. So we decided, let's just find out what we can do. So phase one of the study was first to find out, do we have the demographics, you know? If you look throughout the Olympic Peninsula, but also there's lots of Tacoma that would be much rather being flying out of here than C-TAC trying to get there or not. So do we have the demographics? And the answer was yes. And then the other part was what is, what's the community feel about it? And what we kind of got was um, they either said, I love the idea as long as this doesn't happen, or I hate the idea unless you can promise me this doesn't happen. And they were all kind of saying the same thing. And it was really about traffic. It was about noise and it was about, I don't want to be taxed more money for this airport. And so we we took that to heart. And so phase two is really to kind of go into that part. Uh, we will be soon traveling to events. It's really interesting how you get airlines here. You you go to this like speed dating conference and you're in front of people and we've got people way smarter than us walking us through this and have the context just to find out who's interested, who might do what. It'd be more regional, maybe hubs like San Francisco or LA, but also destinations like Vegas, Palm Springs, Arizona. That's kind of the idea, but it just depends on what the appetite is. And that's what we'll find out. Once we know that, we'll know the flight patterns, we'll know the traffic conditions and what that might do. But my guess is um, you know, we we have jets that fly in there almost every day. People just don't know because the flight pattern does not go over that. The general aviation needs to and the helicopters do, but typically these jets don't. So I don't know if that's going to be a problem. And then the traffic is really minimal if you're doing 10 flights a day with, you know, planes that probably fill 100 people. But I I don't know for sure. We'll see what what happens, what's said there. So I'll now talk a little about the industrial park. This industrial park is on both sides. You see the highway that kind of splits it. If you're looking at the picture on the right, it's kind of the original industrial park. Um, that's probably got 650% capacity. And then the left side is the airport side where there's really a lot of opportunity on that side. One of the things that, you know, um, if you can go to the next slide, you know, what's beneficial about this area is um, we have pad ready sites, which I mentioned, so people can come in and build right now if they want to do that. We've got utilities to the site. Um, we've got um, you know, reasonable rates. We've got rail access, which a lot of ports don't have that can get you the deep water ports. We've got foreign trade zone, which is basically says, if you bring your product, if your building is within our foreign trade zone, it we can either reduce, defer, or sometimes eliminate the tariff prices. And there are people that if they say, this is what I do, the foreign trade zone group can tell them whether they'll save money or what's going to happen. So these are things that we know are important to users. So it's pretty beneficial here. Uh, this is just a project that we're working on. It's Highway three frontage development. It's about 13 acres. Uh, we didn't really have frontage view property a building. So I thought this might be a good idea to start the development. So you go to the next slide. So this is the rendition of what we're trying to do. Once again, we work on the infrastructure, typically not the buildings, but we went ahead and that green building, we went ahead and started that one and we had that built. I think it's on the next slide. Yeah. So that was the building that needed to get put up. It's about um 6,000 square feet. And before we had it done, we had a user, you can go to the next slide, uh, was defiant or allied boats, which is a subsidiary of defiance boats. And the timing was good because once COVID was done, you couldn't build boats fast enough anymore. And so there was a big demand. And so we've got these guys um growing. We've got another company. If you go to the next slide, expanding. Um, Invent Tech Marine Solutions, they are a spinoff from Safe Boats. The guy who started Safe Boats is now building boats more for uh the general consumer rather than the high-end military requirements. You can go to the next one. This is just an ad of the type of boats that they they build. And so he's putting in a 70,000 square foot building, about 160 jobs. He's almost done with the site. So it's been good expansion. And then we recently bought a building, um, about 10,000 feet, concrete tilt up. The user moved out. The owners didn't want to own it. They came to us. We came to an agreement. You go to the next page, it just shows the inside of the building. It's a great building for manufacturing. It's got a crane in there and all kinds of things. Um, but it what it doesn't have is sprinklers. And now that we're uh times have changed and you were putting all the it the things that need to get in there and then we'll put it out for lease. And we've got, we've got several people already interested. So there's definitely truth to the fact that there's a demand out there. And then I didn't want to talk about Circus of the Northwest. This has been an interesting topic since I've come here. Um, it's been up and down on what they're doing. So in a nutshell, it's about a 200 acre premier sporting event center is what the it's called. It's supported by the Seattle Sports Commission. Um, that racetrack is about two and a half mile road race. Um, the way they fund, the way they make money is um, people own memberships, like you own a golf membership, you own a membership and you have a nice car and you want race it on there. You get to do those kind of things. They're going to have maybe a half a dozen uh racing events that'll do it. But then they expanded it. And if you look at the next page, it's really more than a racetrack and how the commissioners are are looking at this, but um, it's has the um, community event center. Um, it has a um, you can't read, see that from here, but that's where usually read on um outdoor amphitheater. It's got about a 20,000 seat outdoor amphitheater. Um, they're building a STEM Technology Center. Um, and just a lot of things, um, a performing arts center, things that they want. Racing isn't for everybody and they wanted this to be for the community. So there's lots of things that they're putting in there besides this. You go to the next page, I think it's some more. So here's just a picture for their automaniums. These are these, they're going to sell their like garages for their race cars. And then above that is the suite so they can watch the racing that goes on. And the next one is their amphitheater rendition of what they're going to do there. And they have a nationally known event company that would bring these types of venues down to the area. Um, the STEM Center, uh, we've got a company called UTI who's very interested. I don't know if you're familiar with them. They're um, I know they have a place out of Arizona. These guys do training mostly for high-end automotive. And it's known for, these kids go to this training and before they're out, they already have a job from a major automotive um, company. And I did this presentation in Belfair and one of the women said her son went through that program in Arizona and he's he got to pick where he wanted to live and what he wanted to do. So I think it's really got good potential. And then phase two would include hotel development. So uh that'll be a ways out. Then finally, just uh talk about some of the companies that we've got there. Of course, Safe Boats, they design and build extremely durable vessels that used by the military, law enforcement, fire professionals, border patrol, drug enforcement. Um, they they sold over 50 different countries. Um, the smaller boats are really doing well. So that means we're here in Port Orchard are doing well. Um, they're like 40, 20 foot jet skis is what I call them. They're fast and they, if you ever ride one, you're actually strapped in to go. And then electric boats is a, they designed a uh construction and supportive submarines for for banger. Part of General Dynamics International Marine and Industrial applicators. They do marine service prepping and and painting contractor. They employ about 150 people here. Uh, Triton Marine Construction, they do engineer. 150 people. And add on over here. And then their fire safety training facility to armed forces and Washington State ferry systems. Um, they basically light those things up and then and then uh put them out. And there's one more picture of it. It's kind of interesting. This is a picture of a submarine. I think it's half filled with water and they light the fire on top of that. So these guys go in and get training on how to put those out. That's just finally, just the summary of Hawaii Porter Bremerton. We have land available. We got pad ready sites. Olympic College is created job skills training. They will sit table and help with training programs together. Foreign trade zone, transportation, all those things we talked about. And then the quality of life, which is an easy sell. Um, what's in the hopper? We're continuing to extend airport way. But the master plan, which includes the airport feasibility, sewer expansion is a big one. Uh, we haven't got an answer to that yet. Lots of different ways to do it, but none of them are ideal. We're working with the city of Birmerton to see if they want to incorporate this because they have residents out that that they need to service as well. Of course, uh, working with um Mason County is and with the city as well. Um, with the Navy, with the um, plans that they've got through their sign up program and their expansion, there's lots of things happening. We're trying to get prepared for that. Um, and then really focusing on public, private investment has becoming more and more of an opportunity than it used to be. It used to be not interested. It was about when Amazon came in and people came and they paid attention and they like what we're seeing. So that's about it. Lots going on. Um, we've got lots of questions that James here. Might as well use the one I've got here.
Great, great presentation, Jim. A lot of information. Is that question, Councilor Dean, or go ahead?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. That was very informative. Um, my first question is easy. How many people work for the port?
We've got about um, little over 30. Okay. Half of those are facilities, people that do um the marinas and then the airport and then the most are either our directors. And so um, and then we contract out for a lot, any engineering and things like that. We just don't have a consistency for that. So we usually contract that kind of stuff out.
Makes sense. My next question is, um, you talked about the breakwater replacement, but I don't know if I caught a schedule for that.
Um, James, why don't you speak for that?
So the breakwater should have been completed by now. Uh, it's been a long permitting process with the Army Corps and uh the National Marine Fisheries. Um, we were caught in the middle of a section where they are redefining their mitigation for endangered species. And much like many of the waterfront shoreline projects, they added about 18 months to the permitting process for the federal agencies. When we did get awarded the uh grant of 9.4 million from uh the Department of Transportation, they additionally wanted to retool all of the documents one more time and redo NEPA, which added another uh another nine months at minimum. Um, and we're just coming out of that and finishing. And we're looking to have that bid go out before year end. We're looking for construction offsite uh to begin next spring. And then um, our fish window starts July 15th through February 15th. So the in-water work, the placement of pilings and the anchors for the floating breakwater, what occurred during those fish window times, which is July to February. Offsite construction would occur on uh the entirety of the year and they would float those sections. And now the design was created so that it does occur outside the existing perimeter of the breakwater, which is allows the new construction to go in without impacting the port operations or the marina at all. Um, the when complete, we will remove the interior, the existing breakwater. And what it results in is another 14 feet of fairway, which reduces many of those night what white knuckle experiences when you're passing boat to boat uh in a very narrow construction space. So it's a safety improvement, plus it helps with the construction so that marina operations are essentially unimpacted by this construction. It's looking to be a two-year construction window. And we should have it wrapped up by the beginning of 2028.
Are are you looking to replace any of the finger piers on the interior of that?
Yes, but um, that's the next project and we're working on funding and design at this point. This is a big lift for the port since building a uh the Birmerton Marina in 2008. It's the biggest overwater structure and project that we've had. So um, it's significant um for the port to be able to ensure that we have all the financial um, support for that, plus the staffing to be able to manage a major capital project like that.
Okay. So my last is just a comment. So as a user of the port until I sold my boat recently, um, but also as a as a person whose family walks on on the on the marina, the breakwater, um, you can definitely tell just by walking down there that it's it's on its last legs, well past its last legs. And I I think it might be helpful to people that are using the marina and are walking on the docks. If you had a uh site plan on those glass walls by the entrance that showed people just what was coming so that they don't think this is just business as usual for the port.
Right. You know, I've seen some great billboards about four by eight that show a new community center and library that has been great to see the in next projects that are coming down the line. That's a a process we can take on as well to make sure that it's well advertised.
Yeah. And finally, I'm just impressed by the amount of business that you have discussed to them for our region. It's it's very.
There's a lot going on in the port. Um, we're a major um, job creator and for the county and we're continuing to grow as Jim said, there's there's so much going on that people don't even know about.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Excellent um presentation. And I want to um add that uh you guys, the um the marina has worked so well with the um farmer's market. And we're going to miss you, James, that the farmer's market is. But um, yeah, it's just been a a wonderful um partnership. And I know it will still continue to. And and the other thing is, yeah, the um, the air show. Amazing. Our uh Port Orchard Rotary was down there for two days and very impressive. Looking forward to be down there again for the air show.
Did I mention where James was going? I said he was leaving uh Port of Paul's boat, so he won't be far away. So.
Good.
Congrats.
Just a bow right away.
Councilor Morrison.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Jim, for a wonderful presentation. You know, uh, the things that you and the commissioners have done over the last 10 years are no short of amazing. But I just also want to say what a breath of fresh air it is to find a government entity that finds a way to yes, right? Uh, you guys uh get creative and find a way to make things work. And that's refreshing in today's age. So uh many kudos to you and the entire team over there for doing that. Uh, and 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 the special thanks to to James, you will be missed. Uh, I I know that the portal feel it way more than than us here at the city, but uh, this community will miss you. But we also know we gained an ally up north. Uh, and just because you won't be here every day doesn't mean we won't see you. Uh, and then my last little bit is maybe a question is, has the port considered uh with all that land out there, uh, or has anybody looked at data centers in this area? We don't have any really on this side of the water. Um, and I know that they've been boons to other communities as well. So just two cents.
Yeah. So my, we always be interested in things like that. There's really not much of an interest, especially on the this side of the mountains and its power, the cost of power. You can get it at such a fraction of the cost and they're just building them continually. Uh, we were just over at Port of Shalan and uh Douglas County and um that you would not believe the centers that are going up there. Yeah.
Councilor Chang. Thank you for the presentation. You have beautiful photos. Are they natural or were they enhanced by AI?
Uh, you know, I'd have to ask, I I think our marketing person probably edits them a little bit, but they're usually hired photographer.
It could be postcards. Um, I I like your expanded breakwater. Will that be affecting the foot ferry, um, the foot ferry route?
It shouldn't.
No, we've worked very close with Kitsap Transit to ensure it doesn't impact the route at all. Um, they're, they do store ferries there occasionally on the East Breakwater. And there may be a phase where they will be shifting to the Birmerton Breakwater for the overnight storage. We already have those agreements in place and are ready for that uh occur when we start construction.
Thank you. Sure.
Councilor Warden.
Yeah, Jim, uh, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I've definitely over the last few years been really interested in watching uh, how you guys grow. Um, I've been out in Destro Park, my day job the last 21 plus years and watching it grow out there and all the different businesses come out there and one comes vacant, fills up in a minute, you know? And so uh, thanks for bringing all the employment out there and everything because it's made a huge, huge difference on our um uh, our community. James, you'll definitely be missed, but uh congratulations on on your next adventure. So.
You know, when I first came out and toured the area uh before I took the job, the one thing that I, Port Orchard, I came in here and I just thought, this place has so much opportunity. I came from places where I've seen small towns grow and I and you just see it. And I drove through the port and I felt the same way. You know, fortunately, I spent 20 years in private sector. So um, I came from that background. It's like, what's it going to take to get to yes? And and what's nice is ports, we have a little more elbow room than most governmental entities. And so we have that ability to do that. And it's like, it's the perfect balance for me for private, public sector. You know, you're doing things good for the community. Profit is not my 100% motivation anymore. It's it's jobs. And so it's really kind of fun.
Yeah, we have really good bones.
Yeah.
Like we have really good bones here. Um, we just need to uh bill off of that. What are you guys, um, right, the buildings you tore down right over here? Um, what's the goal for that area right there?
You're talking about the performing art.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So until we get the testing done and do the soil testing, that's what we'll do. Lay down yard until we can get going. And we really, you know, we're seeing what's happening on the left of us with the old tweetens. And you think that's really, you know, that might be of interest. Um, we see what's going on the other side with the conference center and it's like, you know, maybe parking is the answer. I don't know, you know, we really have to kind of see how that plays out.
So you might resell it?
Um, yeah, well, probably um, we typically like to lease it.
Land.
Roll because then we have a little bit of control over what they do there.
Sure.
Uh, sometimes you don't, you know, depending on the project, um, they don't want to lease, they want to own it. If we think the project's worth doing, then we would do it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Cherry.
Yeah, Jim, thanks for the presentation and everything you are doing and will continue to do for us here. James, thank you for what you have done and will continue to do for the Port of of Paul's boat. Um, you've been a pleasure to work with. Um, and I I wish you good luck.
Councilor Dean.
So I, there was a question I forgot to ask. Is is there a point at which you trip a second boat ramp down there? And um, look at additional parking for that. It can get pretty busy, particularly during during certain.
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts of that, James?
Well, if you, if you recall, we remodeled that I in conjunction with the city. Um, I think that was around 2011 and that was a big part of serving as that's the last production part of the. I think that was around twenty eleven and that was a big part of serving as, that's the last production part of the line for safe boats. And that's, they launch every vessel that they build there, they train here and then they test here. And that is, we are part of their production line. And currently, they've identified it's the last brie boat launch in all of Kitsap County. Every one of them you have to pay for and we've tried to maintain that because we have a lease, it's in the city right away. And that's a public presence, it's something that we get state grants to do. A secondary ramp, we do have Manchester nearby, which is a very busy ramp. Ramps seem very busy during the height of summer and fishing season, but very quiet the rest of the year. And so we haven't had nearly a year round demand that you would see on a typical Sunday afternoon in August. And it hasn't quite been there yet. You know, we still have the two ramps in Bremerton there nearby and they're not used to their capacity either. So with more, I think if you get one more boat builder, that might justify it.
Okay, good information, thank you.
Sure.
I I thought of one more thing while listening to others, you had a great presentation on the Marina Square project. If there was ever an opportunity on this side of the water to do something like that, I I think there'd be some appetite. In particular around parking, so always reach out because I think you have friends here at the city.
Yeah, well, thanks, that's certainly in the back of our mind with the piece of property that we're working on now and the one adjacent to it, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we were, at this point, we don't have a public hearing, we're going to be going into an executive session, pursuant to RCW forty two thirty one one oh. Related to a real estate matter and I believe we'll start with fifteen minutes and we'll go from there.
Is that, Rob, is that county related or?
No, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, guys. All right, yeah. Did see, I think we'll be saying you. With property in the county, they only prevents.
Sure. No, I just want to keep.
Thanks very much for the impressive presentation. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's so many people that say we had no idea. And I know specifically, Eric, it will not use AI. Just, they're all asking, they are, they're, they're. Data centers. Yeah.
Oh, yes, we did, it's written on it earlier. But there's also one that.
You would have something to say, right?
Hey, Jay. Can you hear me? Hey, Jay, can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, the chamber is muted. If you've resumed the meeting, we can't hear you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'll paraphrase that last part.
Can they hear us now? Do we need to start?
Can you hear us now, Charlie?
We can hear you now. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I'll paraphrase my summary real quick. So the city opened bids. They solicited bids for the demolition of the Bay Street overwater structures as part of the Bay Street project. The city received five bids. The low bid was Nordland Construction Northwest for $491,740 and seven cents, which is our lowest responsive bid. Our high bid was $1.6 million. Public Works staff reviewed all submissions for compliance licensing and bidder responsibility requirements. As the lowest responsive bidder, Nordland is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Awarding this $491,740 and seven cent contract will allow for the demolition to proceed, advancing the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Dean, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a public works contract with Northern Construction Northwest Incorporated for Bay Street overall structure demolition.
Second.
Motion by councillor Dean, or second by council member Fenton.
Questions? Questions and comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
So with this, I'm hopeful that we will send out letters to adjacent property owners that let them know that this is happening, that there might be some impacts to them in terms of noise and potentially even traffic. But also to let them know that the pilings are going to remain so we don't get questions from those neighbors about, you guys are only halfway done. What's going on? I want to give congratulations to staff and I know, Mayor, you've been working really hard to try and get other agencies to think outside the box. So I really appreciate that it took a lot of effort to get us to where we are and kudos to you for leading that effort.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing I had is on pages 81 and pages 112. Page 81 speaks to a 90 day contract once you proceed, but then page 112 speaks to 30 days to complete the project.
So we did do a bit addendum to the contract. It was originally 30 days. That was something we heard from all the questions during the period. And we did extend it to 90 days. That will not start till we get notice to proceed.
Right, right. Okay. Just wanted to point that out. That's all that I have. Thank you again.
That's okay.
Yeah, this does seem exciting and congratulations to the staff. I did have a question for Dennis, though. Do you know if the contractor typically will involve any other, I don't know, vendor who might be able to repurpose some of the construction materials like Habitat?
We didn't scope that in the project. The means and method we left up to the contractor, that is the variance you see in the prices likely. They all had different approaches and so some are going to be from land, some are going to be from water. So that was not specified.
Councillor Chang, I've been in those houses. There's nothing worth salvaging. They're in really bad shape. Councillor Cherry?
Yep. Well, I'm excited that this came in under budget from what we were anticipating costs were going to be to first off. Secondly, when can we expect the start of this process and how long it's going to take, Dennis?
So originally, we were doing this under an emergency permit with Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. They requested that we do the formal process. They assure us that we are any day from receiving that final, the final permit needed for that project. And that's when we'll issue the notice to proceed. The in-water work window for the fisheries, as James mentioned, it actually starts August 15th and it goes through February. So we have a long window, but we do, we do expect the entire project to be done before the 90 day period, once granted.
Any idea, and I know this is a guest, but any idea how long those pilings will stay in ground?
I would anticipate that they will remain until probably about two years until the next phase of the project. That's when we're funded to start phase one is 2020 step.
All right. Thank you. Councillor Ward, go ahead.
Yeah. Do we, do we have, when do you expect the ecology permit to be able to remove the homes to come through? Do we have that already?
The department, are you speaking of the clean air permit?
Sure.
Yeah. So we've started the internal city building permit, demo permit. And so once we have that, we'll issue the, the clean air usually is a 24 to 48 hour turnaround. So.
So the contractor, they have all the requirements that are in place for the demo?
Yes. So the contract did call for the contractor to provide the building demolition through the city and the clean air permits. The city is starting that process. Our Department of Community Development says that that should come from the city as the responsible party and then we'll have the contractor sign off on them.
Okay. So that's why me shut it. So they have the whole scope of work as far as what needs to be out there for any type of pollution in the water?
Yes.
All that jazz. That's all, there's no more, the 491, that's, that's it. They're not coming back to us for more because of the requirements.
This was a very, very comprehensive spec. And it wasn't like we could have, I've been in agencies where they do a small works project and say, demo the house. This was very formal with erosion control, capturing sediment. It's called out specifically. And I will also say our design team is a specialist with overwater work. So very, very mindful of how that was designed.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Councillor Finn?
Yeah, the great news, because this is what we've been waiting for. So it sounds like it will be anywhere from now to February, but sooner than February.
Yes, it's, I would anticipate the start of the construction as soon as we get that within a week of getting that final permit through the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. We have been out there on site with them. We have walked the entire shoreline with them. They are very much in favor and support this and they recognize that they need to go.
Yeah. No, thank you.
Thank you. Any last questions or comments?
Councilmember Rose.
Yes, I have a question.
Sorry, Jay, go ahead.
No, it's all right. First of all, kudos to mayor and staff and also to the council for bearing with us. There's been several naysayers out in the community that basically said, we'd never get to this day. It's a little bit late, I understand. But we're here and kudos off. Good call, Scott, about notifying neighbors. And lastly, Dennis, do we have any working history with Northern Land before? Obviously you're correct. We have several varying bids. Just like to make sure, I know we've done our due diligence, but could you give us more information on them?
I'm not aware of any previous city work for the city of Port Orchard, but we do have staff in our engineering department that has worked with them in the past and it was a favorable experience.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. All right. You'll be voting on a resolution, authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Nordland Construction Northwest for the Bay Street overwater structure demolition. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Anyone opposed? All right. The resolution passes unanimously. We're to item B now, approval of a purchase and sale agreement for real property located at 1333 Lloyd Parkway. And I think Dennis is going to take this versus Ms. Archer.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. The city recently identified the commercial property at 1333 Lloyd Parkway located near our current public works operations facility and offices. The site includes both an office building and a workshop which would allow public works to meet current and future operational needs. Originally, the city planned to construct a new facility to meet these needs. Acquiring this property offers the same capacity at a lower cost and a much faster timeline than new construction. Purchase and sales agreement, the negotiated purchase price is for $2.5 million. The agreement is a contingent upon an appraisal, environmental review and the city council approval. This section tonight would authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents to finalize the purchase once contingencies are satisfied. The acquisition supports, that is all I had for that. Thank you.
Councillor Ternary?
Yeah, I moved to authorize the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement and all associated documents for the purchase of real property located at 1333 Lloyd Parkway and to ratify all prior actions consistent with this authority.
Second. Motion by councillor Ternary and a second by council member Morrissey. Questions about this transaction? I feel this much needed facility for our public works department, we're busting at the seams and it's right down the street from our current facility. So this is the purchase and sale agreement. We've got our due diligence to do appraisal, environmental survey and other, you know, property inspection, building inspection, so, so on and so forth. So this will be, we get all those items done and then we'll be bringing this back to the council for the final approval to fund the transaction. Councillor Member Rosa Pepe, you have a question?
No, I actually had a comment, Mayor, if that'd be all right?
Yep, go ahead.
You know, first of all, I'll go back to what I've said before, previous council members meetings is that no way is building any more land. I think this sets the city up in a positive way in the future with a piece of property and building that are centrally located as the city grows to the west. And I think that if we look at the long term, this is definitely something that's in our best interest and in the interest of the citizens of the city. So I'm all in favor of it.
Right. Councillor Ternary?
I just want to add the, the purchase price of this piece of property that already has buildings, stormwater improvements, fencing, all of this, these things that we were looking at, at building on another piece of property is so much lower in costs than we would have been spending to rebuild or to build on this new piece of property. This is a really a win-win and a great thing for the city. I think it really puts us in a great spot to try to maintain our level of services with the growth we've had over the last few years. I think it's a great idea, a great job.
All right. Any other comments? Questions? All right. You'll be voting.
Yeah, I just would say I wholeheartedly support the project. I think it will reduce stress on staff, takes away the idea of a project of having to find another piece of the property and build. So this is, this is a great move and very fortuitous on our part.
I think one thing the general public doesn't see is they don't go out there and see what the staff is working with. They don't see that there's no room for their own personal vehicles we parked out there, let alone all the city vehicles parked out there as well. You know, we have electric vehicles without charging stations. We have vehicles that are not parked undercover that need to be indoors during the winter time. We have backpedal trucks, we have sweepers, things that hold water. We have ice de-icers, you name it, that all need to be indoors. And we don't have that. In order to build that would cost millions of dollars. And so when something like this open, opens up for us, yeah, we weren't thinking about two years ago. They probably weren't thinking about selling two years ago either, right?
That's right.
So when it opens up, like we just gotta be prepared to grab something like that because they're at full capacity out there and I get nervous seeing their vehicles out there, you know, in the winter time. So it'll be good for them.
That's, you're spot on there. The, you know, we've got nearly $10 million of equipment sitting in the weather.
Right.
And, and a lot of that stuff needs, you know, this building will provide some coverage, you know, storage for that. And it gives us some property that we can put up some, some pole buildings in the future to, to handle future needs too.
And it's, and it's where it belongs.
Right.
In industrial park.
Yep.
Not in that part of the city that land might become available for us. So, yeah.
Just real quickly, I also want to recognize that the spirit of the landowner and working with us, because this could have taken a lot longer or been more difficult. So once this is concluded, I'd like to send a, a letter from the council to the landowner and recognize what they have done for the future of Port Orchard.
I think we're probably even going to do something even more special than that. The father of the gentleman I'm working with, Rob, is Red Lobston. And I think we might name the building after him and put a plaque on the building and, and do some really nice recognition. Because, yeah, without their foresight, they developed that industrial park. And without this family's contribution to our community, we wouldn't have that industrial park. So I think that definitely needs to be recognized.
Yeah. And they reached out to us, right?
Well, our pub, we've been, our public works was kind of watching.
Eyeballing.
Yeah, we, we had heard that they were retiring and selling their equipment off. And this property really wasn't even on the market formally. So, yeah, it's a really great opportunity and I'm glad we're able to yeah, step up and do this.
Good work on that.
So, all right. You'll be voting to approve a purchase and sale agreement for real property located at 1333 Lloyd Parkway. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agreement is passed unanimously. We're to item C now, adoption of a resolution declaring the intent to reimburse for capital expenditures from a future borrowing for real estate purchase. Mr. Proctor, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The previous action, city council approved the purchase and sale agreement for the public works building on 11333 Lloyd Parkway. The city intends to make expenditures for this purchase from available funds and then reasonably expects to be reimbursed for those expenditures from bond proceeds or other obligations issued to finance these expenditures. This resolution is necessary to, as an administrative step to declare the intent to take this action in the future. Staff would recommend approval of a reimbursement resolution.
Okay. I move to adopt a resolution declaring the city's intent to be reimbursed from future borrowing proceeds.
Second.
Got a motion by councillor Chang, a second by council member Fenton. Questions to Mr. Proctor, I think it's self obligatory. We're just, we're using our cash now and in the future, we intend to do a borrowing and put basically a mortgage on this building.
That'll come back through for approval. So this is just an authorization to move the budget as it currently exists? Or will we need a budget amendment after we get to the point where?
Yeah, excellent question. So this is just a reimbursement resolution. This is part of the financing package, if you will, to declare that the city intends to reimburse itself from bond proceeds. This is typically done so that entities don't finance operational costs. So you declare your intent as a capital expenditure. And that was our initial intent. Now to the budget question, I will bring forward a budget amendment, probably at the first meeting in September to capture the two and a half million dollar purchase. I'm going to treat that as a separate amendment outside of the mid-bay area review just because it's cleaner and I want to keep the timelines a little on par with when we actually close. So I will bring a budget amendment in September for the two and a half million. And then when we get to the financing, I'll bring financing documents probably in October to meet the November timelines for a financing to occur and fund in February 2026. So I'm looking at a program with the state treasures office. It's called the local program, the least asked, least option catalyst lending program. Their current rate for local governments on a 20 year borrowing is right about four and a quarter, all inclusive cost rate, which is very good. So it's a very good program to work through. It's tech stamp rate and the financing documents are very streamlined. So I will bring those documents back to the council later in the year.
Is that the best way to go? Municipal bond ratings are higher than what the federal open market rate is?
Yeah. So the, the state. Yes, so the, the state treasures office, so a, as a participant in this, the, the city would actually receive the state's credit rating. That's a bit of the pooling program where local governments participate in the state's financings. So we won't be the only borrower in this program, we'll be pooled with other borrowers as well as state agencies. We take advantage of their state resource, of their legal counsel, bond counsel, their credit rating, and they go to market to get the proceeds. So it's a very competitive and we get very good rates through that program.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, you'll be voting on a resolution declaring the intent to reimburse for capital expenditures, expenditures from a future borrowing for real estate purchase, for a real estate property purchase. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
You want to post? The, the motion passes. We're to item D now, adoption of a resolution for the new national opioid settlements, Purdue Pharma and the Sack family and the generic manufacturers, Abgen, M Neil, and Aptex? Yes, and they're all.
At all, at all.
My goodness, there's a whole nother line of them. I'm not going to, we've got Inventor, Myla, Sun, and Zites, I guess. So, and with that, I'm going to let, is this you or Ms. Archer?
I'm happy to speak to this one.
Okay, maybe you'll get the pronunciations right.
I will not even attempt, but this is another phase of the national opioids litigation. And before the council this evening is approval of the next phase of settlements with specific manufacturers as well as Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family who has an ownership interest in Purdue Pharma. So this approval follows in the footsteps of the previous approvals the council has authorized related to acceptance of settlement funds. That is a result of the litigation that has been brought. It's referred to as multi-district litigation because it's been brought in federal court on behalf of all the states and many other participating plaintiffs in order to leverage that cooperative approach to engender a positive resolution. So this phase, and just this phase alone constitutes one hundred and twenty-two point two million payable over the next fifteen years. The city's percentage of that is, is relatively small. And Noah can speak to the anticipated actual monetary amount. Oh, well, actually, the staff report specifically listed it. Go ahead, put it in there, but it's approximately one hundred and twenty-three thousand to one hundred and twenty-six thousand over the next fifteen years or about eighty-two hundred to eighty-four hundred per year. And as the council recalls, we currently have an interlocal agreement with Salish Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization to jointly utilize the funds that we receive through these settlements with other neighboring jurisdictions to leverage those funds collectively for the approved, approved of expenditures of these funds, which the council will recall from the previous settlement agreements. And this, this agreement, this proposed settlement has the same exact strings attached, which says the funds shall be utilized for opioid awareness, opioid prevention steps, and for specific uses in dealing with and helping folks recover from opioid addiction, which through our ILA with Salish, we are able to do in the community or they, they have the infrastructure built to do that. So, long story short, before the council this evening is approval of the next settlement, which has been negotiated. And we need the council to authorize the mayor to sign specific forms that the Washington State Attorney General had, Attorney General's Office had negotiated in order to receive these funds if the council is interested in, in taking those steps. So I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Councilmember Morrissey.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the settlement of opioid manufacturing litigation with Purdue Pharma and generic manufacturers and to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute all necessary documents.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Morrissey, a second by Councilmember Ternary. Any further questions of Ms. Archer? We've been talking about this. It's not a lot of money, is it? But we pool this with all the other entities in the county and it turns into something.
Yep.
And it hopefully helps some people.
This one brought up a thought, now, do we increase the budget? Do we need an amendment to do that or do we just generally let that ride? I, I don't know that I've ever had the opportunity to ask that question because I don't know that we generally have more income than anticipated.
Yeah, so when we receive more revenue in, in a case like this, you don't technically have to amend the budget. You need to amend the budget if you're going to spend more revenue. So that is the point at which we would amend the budget with, is the agreement with the Salish.
And will we have to redo that agreement with Salish? Because we only gave them a set amount each year.
Correct. So if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had Jolene come, we had to present. And so we're currently working through amending the ILA with them. We haven't brought that back to council yet. I think she'd been on vacation, so we're trying to get that ILA agreement, the amendment back before council, hopefully in September. And then we'll capture this settlement as a part of that amendment as well. And then in the mid-bay year review, I'll capture the additional money.
Thank you.
Any questions? Right, you'd be voting on, to approve a resolution for the new national opioid settlements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. So we're to item E now, which is the approval of the January seventeenth council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Ryan, I make a motion to approve the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting.
He makes the motion, you weren't there.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna recuse yourself.
And I can't make a motion.
Motion if he wasn't there.
Councilmember Ternary.
Motion.
I make the motion in this place.
Thank you.
I second it.
Second. You got lost all control here today, Mayor.
Totally.
And I'll take responsibility for that.
Motion by Councilmember Chang, a second by Councilmember Fenton. I believe there'll be two extensions from Councilmember Warden and Councilmember Deener, if I have it correctly. All right, you will be voting now on the approval of the June seventeenth regular council meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? And two extensions?
Two extensions.
All right. We have a new business item F, which was previously consent item H. Adoption of a resolution authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Kitsap County and the city of Port Orchard for the West Sound Stormwater Outreach Group. And this is Mr. Ryan and Mr. Warden, would you, would you like, you want to recuse yourself? You, it's up to you.
Oh, he does.
Okay, Mr. Ryan, go ahead.
Thank you. The city is required under the MPDS face stormwater permit to provide public education and outreach to reduce stormwater pollution. The city meets this requirement through West Sound Stormwater Outreach Group or the WASSOG, a partnership with Kitsap County and other local jurisdictions in the Puget Sound area. Proposed in our local agreement continues the partnering from, partnering from January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Kitsap County serves as administrative and fiscal lead. The city will contribute up to thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars over three years for the program cost and administration. Benefits include shared messaging, joint program development, and cost savings and improved regional consistency. Supports permit compliance and increased public awareness. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. This is just one of our many outreach tools that we use that we're required to under the permit conditions.
Councilmember Morrissey, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Kitsap County for the West Sound Stormwater Outreach Group partnership activities for the years twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight in a form approved by the city attorney.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Morrissey, and I'm going to give the, the second Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Yeah, so Councilmember Morrissey, go ahead, you're the motion maker.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, council, I think something's very broken with what's going on with our council member Warden and the county. So part of this is, one, I don't want him to have to not vote on the rest of what's consent agenda. So I pulled this off of consent agenda. Maybe that's something that we can work at in the short term at the city to help avoid that so that we don't have to make extra monkey business at the front of the meeting. But on a larger note, I'm just super sad for the county that, that, that we're broken like this and that we have to even do this. As you know, council member's day job is working for the county. And they've indicated that, that he can't participate in anything that works or mentions with the county and/or stormwater, which I, I have a hard time digesting, right? There doesn't seem to be any consistency at the county because we have another council member who is an employee of the, of the county. So just as, as someone who runs a business or an organization, that perplexes me on top of that. But also, as one government entity to another, aren't, aren't we all on the same team? Aren't we all here serving the taxpaying residents of Port Orchard and/or Kitsap County? And wouldn't it be nice if we all played along? I, I think it's an absolute travesty to the nineteen thousand people that live in this city that we can't benefit off of the knowledge of our fellow council member that they sent here to represent them and be a voice. He brings with him a skill set that I think in, in his line of work is unmatched at this dais. And, and I couldn't let this opportunity go without, without saying something. You know, on top of it, I'd be questioning the leader and, and, and those kinds of things, but are we all on the same team? Don't we want to benefit from, from, from his knowledge? So I'm calling on our elected officials at the county to, to, to help us with that, right? We want to be the best city that we can and be a great partner and part of our larger community of Kitsap County. And I'm hoping that we can get some resolution for this council so that we don't have another entity telling us how we should or should not run the business of the city.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. So thank you for that, Councilmember. And it just doesn't seem, yeah, fair.
Councilor Chang.
Thank you, Councilmember Morrissey. I concur with your sentiments. I believe it's actually a departmental thing and not really indicative of the whole county government, but maybe a letter from the council to whoever his department heads it would be.
I'm, I'm hoping that a little call out here, I, I've made those phone calls person to person and didn't get what we needed. So that may be next. So I may be calling on the rest of you to, to take up that banner when the time comes.
Councilor Keen. So, I, my support we're saying, I know that we can all play in the same sandbox together, but I, I think those directives are not coming from anybody at a city level. Obviously, it's, it's coming at a, at a departmental level. I strongly believe that there will be policies that come out of this for people who are electeds or appointed throughout Kitsap County, including ports. So I, I think we can stay tuned for more engagement on this. And it's my hope that those electeds and appointed will actually have an opportunity to review what policies are promoted by the county. Because when you talk to other electeds, they really see the value in trying to share information. And, you know, I, I came to the city with land use as kind of a niche. And, and I think it was, it was really appreciated. And, and so I think, you know, there's others that offer that same value in different areas. And what I would encourage us to do is, is to maybe have the mayor talk about this with the county administrator and say, look, what, what's next? Are we, are we looking at some policies which will help everybody, not just Eric, not just the county, but also the city? So I think there's more to come on this. I, I don't, it's not a dead issue with the county, I can tell you that.
And Mr. Ryan, just in, in the future, we need, do need to be mindful of stormwater issues and not try not to put them on.
Absolutely. And I, I, yep, we, we're working on making that correction.
Yep, appreciate that. Councilmember Fenton, you have something to say?
Yeah, if you can put it just kind of in a nutshell, Councilmember, Member Deener. Do you have a different boss? Do you have something different?
I do.
Like, because it's, it's just not consistent.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that I did differently in twenty sixteen than, than Eric has done today. I have a different boss. I reached out for a legal opinion before I, with, with the county attorney before I came on board. So I've, I've got that. And I don't know if Eric had benefit of, of such a review. So there are some things that I think we can definitely do better. And again, this isn't limited, I can tell you, this is not just limited to the city. There are other, there are other things, so. And I don't want to get myself in any more trouble than I may or have.
Yep. So.
I, I think I had a respect for the situation at hand.
Yes.
Probably move on to the topic at that.
I just, I'd want to give my last two cents, I hope so too. That's, that's, that's the motive behind here. I'm looking for a little expediency because as you can see, it's already having effects here to the staff level at the city, which I, I really shouldn't be their issue. But I appreciate them making those exceptions for us in the interim. And here's my hope and, and prayers that the, the county can move swiftly.
Okay.
I have a hand raised, Mayor.
Go ahead, Kay.
Okay, appreciate it. I'm going to fully support what John has said, especially on the expediency side because Eric is also involved in utilities and with the sewer advisory committee. We lose a good member and I believe there's an expectation among all of us that there's a separation of our duties on one hand and our duties on another that we do the right thing. When I was previously with the school district, I was fully supported by the superintendent realizing that sometimes there are things that I would have to make in the best interest of the city, even though it may have gone not quite the way the superintendent might have liked or asked those questions. So I think that, John, I fully support what you're saying and I'm hoping that if we don't see some movement when we meet again in September that we do look at drafting a letter and sending it to the commissioners for whom the staff works for. So that would be my two cents. Additionally, one last point. You may have heard it incorrectly when Dennis was speaking. I heard thirty-five thousand five hundred, just in case somebody doesn't read the fine line, it is thirty-eight thousand five hundred. And if you said that correctly, Dennis, I apologize here incorrectly. Thank you.
Right, okay. We'll be voting, you'll be, you will be voting on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Kitsap County and the city of Port Orchard for the West Sound Water, Stormwater Outreach Group. All in favor, can you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? So the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Councilmember Fenton. All right, got a couple of discussion items and then our committee reports left. So the next two discussion items, actually, I, I put on the agenda and I'd just like to talk, you know, in relation to our public comment interactions and our, our meetings are, are, by our code, we use Robert's Rule of Order. And Robert's Rule was of order to take the structure and the format of our meetings. You know, when a council member wishes to speak, they're supposed to wait to be acknowledged and, and, and so forth. And I believe it's awkward when, when council members are, are thanking members of the public in that, in that interaction when, as the facilitator, I'm doing that on, on your guys' behalf. You know, when a couple of council members thank someone and the others don't, does that come across as the rest of you aren't thankful? I certainly hope not. This is your meeting, I'm, I'm here to facilitate your meeting. So I'm just looking for some direction on how we want the, 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 whether we want open dialogue in that, in the public comment period. And so just looking for some direction. So, Councilmember Fenton, go ahead.
When you say thank you, that is not doing open dialogue. And, and I remember Councilmember Deener, he did that one time with one that somebody came up and that was fine. We got to learn more, but for the most part, we don't do a dialogue when someone comes up. But for the most part, we don't do a dialogue when someone comes up. But I think it's very, very nice. It's very genuine to say thank you. When we have a presentation, like even today, you guys all get a comment, you all get to say thank you. Some people might say it longer, but you're just saying, and some people could just say thank you. So for, for us to say that we can't even do that little bit, I think it would not be, it wouldn't be good. And like, again, Robert's Rules does not say that we cannot say thank you.
Councilmember Morrissey.
So I've had some thought about this because I know we've had a couple of different discussions here and there over the last, you know, almost two years now. And so I'm not in board for open dialogue during public comment. I think there's a can of worms in there that just, we don't want to open because we may interact with one person but not the next. And then we just want to make sure that we treat that consistently. When it comes to saying thank you, I'm kind of agnostic. I don't have a say one way or another. I think what the mayor is trying to say, just Councilmember Fenton, is that it doesn't say you can't say thank you, but it says that you shouldn't speak unless you're acknowledged by the chair in some aspect. I would maybe look if that is so choosing, like I said, I'm agnostic. But if the majority of us want to say thank you, I think that we could relax those rules to say that we could do that if we wanted to. But like I said, I don't have a feeling one way or another that way.
Councilmember Warden.
Yeah, I don't want to sound rude. And it's gonna sound rude, but nobody's coming up here to speak to department heads or to the mayor. They're coming here to speak to city council. It's a city council meeting and that's what it's titled. I understand that you facilitate it. I think it is extremely, for me, I think it's rude that someone's that show up here and they're gonna stand up there with the light in front of their face and they're gonna speak into a microphone, which is why we started coffee with council, people a little bit more relaxed and informal. But they're gonna show up here and they're gonna speak in that microphone with the light in front of their face. And I'm supposed to stand here and not even acknowledge them, not even say two words, thank you. I fully understand that we're not gonna ask questions, we're not gonna engage. I understand that you facilitate meetings to have structure and order. But I think to say thank you and that's it, that's all anyone's up here is saying, is thank you. For someone to stand up there for three minutes stressed and talk, and I'm supposed to just look at them blank stare in the face, I think it's just, it's extremely rude. That's how I look at it.
I'm gonna give others a bite at the apple first. Councilmember Chang.
I am similar to John in the sense that I'm kind of agnostic. I can see it both ways because on one hand, when Heidi and Eric, if you say thank you, I think that's harmless. It does make me think like, oh, should I have said thank you? I mean, I'm equally thankful that they came to speak, but does it sound like they're friends of yours and not friends of mine's? And I'm thinking maybe if Rob or Friendly or Rob could say something like, you know, on behalf of the council, I thank you. So maybe a flourish like that, I would be happy with. But, you know, on the other hand, if you guys want to just blur it out, thank you, it doesn't really bother me. It's just, I just wonder if I should include it too.
Have you spoken yet?
I've not. Okay. So you and I have been, we've talked a little about this. And, and I think that, that there is a way for the mayor to thank on behalf of the council. And exactly as you said, it is how I was thinking it. It's, you know, Mr. Smith, on behalf of the city council, I'd like to thank you for speaking tonight. I don't see a problem with that. On the other hand, I'm, I'm also, I want to recognize that we do have parliamentary procedure. And so there is that recognition, albeit rather technical in this, this instance. But, you know, I'm happy to, to see how this plays out. Curious what other time to say. I guess that'd be Jay and Mark.
I see Jay's hand raised.
No, I concur with some of my fellow council members that I believe the mayor as facilitator could acknowledge that the council thanks us. I do like, I'm a little bit more of a stickler for the parliamentarian rules. There's a reason for them. I do appreciate people coming up, but it is very awkward if some people say thanks and other people don't. I think it can leave a mixed message. So if we have the mayor as our facilitator, be a little bit more open about the council, that would satisfy my needs. Thank you.
Councilperson Eric.
Always the last one. So, you know, I have concerns with a question and answer period going on from the, from the council dais during public comments. We have had that once or twice. This is a business meeting for the council, the elected officials to do city business. But I also understand, as Councilmember Warden mentioned, you know, folks that are coming up here are, quite frankly, most of them are nervous. They're not quite sure what they're gonna say or they're reading off of a script. And I don't see, I don't really have much of a problem saying thank you to them. However, I do agree that if only one says thank you and the rest of us don't, what kind of, what kind of pictures does that paint? So, you know, to me, this is, I don't think, to me, it's a little bit, I'm just gonna come out and say, it's a little bit ridiculous to even be discussing it. I think, I think having the mayor just say on behalf of the council, we thank you for your, for your comments. I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm equally fine with having everybody say thank you if they'd like to. If I have a question that comes up in my mind while someone is up at the, up at the, up speaking to us, I'm going to seek that person out personally and I'm gonna ask them my questions after the fact. We have a sign-in sheet that I hope everybody who comes up here and, and comments to us fills that out. That's the reason why we have that signup sheet. So council members can get back to you on our own time and not on the city and staff time to ask our questions, get those questions answered and maybe move that, your concerns along to the right departments within the city. So I guess there's my two cents where I'm, I'm fine leaving it the way it's been for the 90-plus years that the city has been incorporated and using Robert's Rules for their parliamentary actions. Deener's first.
Okay, go ahead, Councilperson.
I just wanted to talk a little bit, maybe, maybe Charlie can help. But, but when we have people that come and testify and, and clarification is needed, it's my understanding that it's not inappropriate to ask whoever's speaking if they could clarify a point or reword that. So it's better to, but my understanding is that that's not necessarily engaging in Q and A. It's just asking them to present in a way that's more understandable.
I think the subtle difference is it's public comment and it's not a public hearing where we're taking testimony. That's, I think that, where if it was a public hearing and they were making testimony, then a clarifying, but I think Mark's point is more, in my opinion, more accurate that that's to be sought out outside of the, it's a comment period and they're providing comment to the city. So Charlie, do you have an opinion on that?
I do as it relates to the time limit. So the problem we run into with Q and A is you're de facto extending the time for an individual to testify beyond what you would offer other folks. So even asking simply a clarifying question, depending on the length of the question, depending on the length of the response, we may be extending. And as I've noted in the past, the mayor has no authority to extend. That has to be the full council voting. And as we've also discussed before, extensions, if you grant one, arguably you've set a precedent that you will continue to extend for other folks as well. And, you know, the city has not, in my tenure with the city, we haven't encountered folks who abuse that, that extension privilege, but many, many other jurisdictions do and it's very, very common. So you, the goal with public comment is to treat everyone equally so that everyone has the same amount of, an opportunity to be heard. And so you run the risk in, with any form of Q and A of calling that equality into question.
Thank you, Charlie. Councilboard.
Yeah. I think this council's doing really well and we're making good progress in communication, acknowledging the community, engaging the community, being more social. I mean, we just had to, let's be real, we kind of had to argue to get, allow a sign sheet. I mean, we, we got pushback on a sign sheet because it involves staff time. It's on, it's on the meeting because of a sign sheet. It was because it involves staff and we got that involved too. That way we can actually make contact with somebody when they leave here. So that's, that's, that's good progress. Everything we're doing is good progress. If somebody up here, I don't care what anybody says up here, I'm gonna say thank you for taking the time to come up here. I don't care what they say. It could be about me. I don't care. I'm gonna acknowledge them and say thank you for coming up here. If somebody sitting next to me over here doesn't want to say thank you, that's on them. It's a city council meeting somewhere in here. We have to have a presence. And when someone comes up here to speak for me to say two, I'm worth, of saying thank you, basically I acknowledge the fact that you showed up here, that's not, that's not too much to ask. We don't need a facilitator. No offense, you did a great job, but we don't need a facilitator to say thank you for the, for the council. It's two words. If you don't want to say it, just sit out. I didn't represent the council to hold this discussion. I promise you that. It's actually pretty embarrassing. It's pretty embarrassing that we have to have full discussion for me to actually tell somebody, thank you for showing up here, sitting over here, hi, Mr. Showers, to talk for three, three minutes very uncomfortably. I didn't represent the council and not, not hold this, this meeting tonight and this discussion topic. I'd much rather be, I'm gonna drink after this right here. But I'm just saying, I do appreciate it, the fact that we are holding the discussion. But for me, I mean, we did a very good job of Robert's Rules holding the order. We've done a very good job over two years, getting training and good structure. But to not say thank you to somebody who showed up here, I think is a little, a little cold, my view.
Councilmember Fenton, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't even know that this was a problem. And so I think we're kind of all on the same page as that. And I don't think we really do, we don't do a dialogue. We had one time someone, you know, said to articulate back, you know, just to get something else. I really don't see this as a problem. And 100% I feel as a council member to say thank you with no dialogue. And if someone else doesn't want to say thank you, it's not a big deal. I don't think it's a big deal, you know, so.
All right, one last, I'd like to move on from this. And this is really more about open dialogue.
No, I.
And we, so.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm very happy that you did put this on because this raised a lot of questions to think about. The issue that Scott brought up is a really good one where he did clarify a question from someone who wanted more time. But it was done in a very nice thoughtful way and it, 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 it did, there was a dialogue and it was more than a comment session, I think we all agree. But, so I think it's good for us to have this discussion, see, do we want to keep it just a comment period or do we want it to be a question and answer period? And I don't think we do, but it's nice to at least know that we have that option if we wanted to. And I think, you know, sort of reinstating what we're doing, it's a nice way to explain it. We could also try practicing saying thank you at exactly the same moment.
No, you either say it or you don't.
So getting, I, I, I strong, I hear strongly where Councilmember Warden, Councilmember Fenton, I've got some folks that somewhat indifferent, you know, what, I'm just looking for direction and how to facilitate. It's your meeting. I'm looking, how do you want me to facilitate this?
So, so if, if the matter is simply about whether we say thank you or not, I've been one of those people and so I'm okay with that. But I also appreciate hearing from Charlie about asking clarifying questions. She said any form of questions. And I can understand that that has the potential to cause others to have more time because now they'll greatly elaborate on something that might have been just a little confusing. So I can see that that, that could be problematic. But I also think, Robert, it was good that you brought this up so that we could talk about order and being recognized. I don't know that thank you crosses that threshold when I think about it.
Okay. You have one last.
Hi, Brian.
Yeah.
Would you like to go first, Councilmember Rose Pepe?
No, go ahead, John. I'll, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. So Councilmember Warden said something that struck a nerve. So I, I'm still not for dialogue, right? There's a time and place and I don't think, and I think that can, can worms. I said I was agnostic. Maybe I'm a bit more leaning now. I think hearing Scott too, saying, uh, thank you's not gonna make me, again, I said it wasn't gonna make me upset any, either way. So I was kind of agnostic. But one of the things I complain about most since taking this post almost two years ago, there's two people in the audience here. I don't know how many online, but there's two people here. And I complain about most that the public doesn't take a vested interest in these decision-making processes that we do right here. And anything I guess I can do to encourage more people to have a fold room here and really tell us what they think, that can't be a bad thing, can it?
Fair enough. Jay, one last thought and I think we'll move on.
Yep, actually a couple. Sorry, Rob, Mayor. First of all, I'll concede the thank you as long as we leave it at that. Otherwise, we open Pandora's box on the city's business. And quite frankly, we've given, we give people two bites at the apple, both in the beginning and at the end. And they also have the ability to leave material with brandy. My main concern is when we get people, some people that are upset with something that's happening at the city, we get a, if we hold dialogue with them, we're kind of blindsided and we don't have the full picture. And that can have us chasing our tail quite a bit. So I would say, hey, we have the citizen comment period. We can follow up like I believe Scott or Fred has said, and then we move forward. So I'll concede the thank you. I may not say it all the time and hopefully my council members won't use it against me. Oh, he didn't say thank you. He doesn't appreciate you. I'm just a little bit more of a stickler for parliamentarian rules. Thank you, and that's my final comment.
All right, thank you. And I will move on to our next item here, which is the Community Event Center. And Jean, can you bring up that image? I think it's in your guys' packet also. But there we go. All right. So you've asked me to gather some more information and then I also received some additional feedback from Kitsap Regional Library about the restrooms. So I've reached out to our design firm. So the question was asked about the single doors that we have three off in the second floor in the event space. We had, the original design was for single doors, three foot wide doors. If we want to change those doors and, and the drawing we have here is, shows nano walls and I'll get to that in a moment. If we want to change those to double doors, which will open fully, there's a nominal, excuse me, a nominal cost to that. So we would have a six-foot wide opening. The nano wall is a storefront system that would disappear across that opening and it would give us a 12-foot wide opening on each, at each one of these points. Now, the, the, the challenge of that is, is those, now the cost of those nano walls for the three of them would be $55,000. So, so I'll share that one, one piece of.
But do you want to kind of go through these as you bring them up?
Sure, why not?
Okay.
Let's get sponsors. I don't know about that.
I like the concept for a building that we're gonna be living with for 50, around 50 years or more.
Okay.
So I think that's a worthwhile investment. I think it also really does, is a good way to engage those that are outside under tents. So you've got, let's say you've got an event that's circulating through the wall. I think that's really a friendly way to have ingress, egress while engaging everybody in and out and not having to turn sideways because you got a couple of drinks in your hand while somebody's coming in the other direction. So I'm actually pretty pleased. 12 feet was more than I thought it would be, but I have no problem with that and the cost.
Okay, Councilperson Sherry.
This is a 50-year building. We have beautiful views.
We have beautiful views from this building, rain or shine, winter or summer. $55,000 is well spent.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Morton.
Yeah, you know, uh, as somebody who has experience with these exact doors, I believe, uh, over at Kitsap Credit Union when I was still there. I love the view and all the things it does. My one caveat, uh, with this is I'm on board. I, I just want clarification on, uh, this is an event space. Uh, these were at the entrance to the corporate office there in, in, in Bremerton. Uh, and there wasn't a way to turn off the automatic opening and closing. That could cause a potential issue at, at some point, as long as you can, how that works, if it's not an auto door, because they should still be able to push out for egress and fire stuff. But we need to make sure that I'm not sitting next to the door and every time in October, when we get a first brush of cold air coming through, that I'm going to be the one sitting next to the door getting cold.
Yeah, so I believe these are manually opened and I'll, and I will confirm that.
Then I'm, yeah, 100%.
And I'm down with that if, if they're not manually. I, I really think that would be a poor placement for that type of door system.
Yeah, I, I don't believe it's not a, it's like, it's a storefront type system, but it isn't. It, 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 it's not gonna be automated. Okay, others thoughts on, I think there's consensus that that, so on to the restrooms, okay? So last time we talked about the restrooms, the direction that was given, and I thought that the, uh, the library didn't have a strong opinion about this. The direction was that we would make one floor male restrooms and the other floor, uh, female restrooms. The library doesn't like that solution. Um, and they want on their, on their floor, all gender restrooms. Uh, and, and feel strongly about that. So that leaves us two choices. Uh, well, three choices, trying to convince our partner differently than, than that. Um, going back to the original design and having, uh, gender neutral restrooms on both floors. Or the third option, which is the picture that you see there, is to redesign the restrooms on the second floor, having male and female restrooms. The, we do lose about half of that, but what was our large conference room is now a smaller conference room there. Uh, the upfront cost that we would need to pay for this, uh, is for the design redesign would be $25,000. The, uh, in, increased construction cost, which would be built into the, you know, the construction, uh, uh, financing, uh, would be $75,000. Um, the nano walls also would be a, there isn't any design aspect to it. Um, they can, they can easily do that, but in this case, we would be responsible, um, upfront to pay for the $25,000 on the redesign. So. So in total, about a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars approximately to redesign and construct, uh, the male and female restrooms on the second floor. And so I'm just looking for some, Councilmember Warden?
Yeah, um, if the library wants to do the bathrooms their way and they're finding their floor in what they're doing. Hands off. Uh, for my vote for what we're doing, um, I'd like to go with the plan B or C.
C or D or whatever.
D or, it's, it's, it's separate bathrooms and, uh, and move forward. So.
Okay.
Concur. Concur.
I, I'm gonna concur. I'm gonna push back. I, I'd like to know why it's 75, uh, we still have the same number of stalls, I think. Right? It's, it's the same number of porcelain. I'm, I'm confused on when we get to construction, can understand the redesign fee, but I don't understand the difference in, in construction unless they're not counting what they had already planned for those buildings. And we were already planning for that much cost and, and that's just the cost of the restrooms. Uh, I, I'm, I would need some more clarification there.
Our design team doesn't, they're, they're using a cost estimation tool. They, they, they don't benefit from it one price or the other. They're just.
Okay.
In.
So they're just spitballing that it could be that.
They, yeah, that's the number they gave me when I asked them for increased construction cost and design cost. So.
Well, there aren't any urinals in this plan, so it can't be.
Changing, plumping around and, and, you know, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I just.
That's the number they gave me. The, the construction cost is gonna be truly flushed out when we go to bid, you know, what it truly is. But the, the real.
That was a bad pun, Mayor.
Is the redesign. Yeah, yeah. So I'm gonna go to Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Was your hand raised or not?
Hey, it was. It was a bad pun, uh, that you just made. Uh, I can live with this. Um, and I think we're missing a little bit of an opportunity. But at this point in time, I'd like to keep this project on schedule and on budget. So I can live with this and move forward.
Okay, Councilmember Jay.
I agree. I, I would, I would support this proposal. I do have a question though. The former, um, arrangement, they were not really stalls. They were rooms. Are these rooms or stalls? Do you know?
I believe these are, this is a traditional restroom.
So, because stalls might be cheaper than the walls, the floor to ceiling walls, I think.
So, yeah, I, I'm just, I'm taking the design team at their word, the numbers they give us and, and the only number really paying at this time is that redesign fee. And the other part will, will come, I guess, part of the bid process. And I, I, Councilmember Sherry, go ahead.
I didn't want to interrupt you.
Nope, I, I would.
So, well, I'm, I'm, he interrupted himself. So I, I'm fine with this, with this change. Um, I do have a question though. It looks like in this new redesign, we have, we're putting in two additional ADA compliant bathrooms. One on each side where we already have two down here a little farther down.
We better do that.
Down the building. Um, do you know why that is?
A question.
For that, we can gain a little bit of extra space back to our meeting room. If we don't need to have those ADA.
Back to the men's room right now.
Men's room only has two.
No, three holes.
Two.
No, two, and it's two sinks. There isn't a urinal. There wasn't room for a urinal and the way the door opens, it didn't, so. There's, this is a, this is a cut and paste of, could we fit this in here?
I'm just curious as to.
I'll, I'll ask that question. Yeah, and I'm glad we talked about this. I, I wasn't comfortable with the split decision. I, I really want all of us to be unanimously behind this project and happy with this project. So. And so just a second, I'm finishing my note here.
That was one of my questions. And one has three and the other is two. So is the women's on the right and the men's on the left?
Yes, women's is on the right, men's is on the left. Okay, so last, because we, we lost.
Mr. Mayor.
The, go ahead.
I, I guess I kind of got lost, Mark, when you were talking about adding two, um, ADA compatible bathrooms. We had two before.
No, no, not adding two.
They're, they're moved over here.
They, they already existed over there. So he's saying, is that duplicate? Duplicate.
Okay.
The, the.
Thank you.
Do we, do we need, do we need ADA stalls in this area too? Is, is a question and I'll, there could be something in the building code that says.
Well, so those are often used as family.
Yeah.
Rooms, so.
So, I'll ask questions of the designer.
If you got, if you got two kids, you want to use that.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's probably maybe even a changing table too in that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, um, yeah, but I'm on board a hundred percent. I think you have to have ma- um, men in women's bathroom, especially in this, um, where you're gonna have weddings and banquet. Um, I think this is the smart way to go.
Okay, so last item is the, over here in what was that co-working space. Now we've lost our biggest meeting room. And so it becomes more important that we have a large meeting space. And when this was originally designed as a co-working space, it had, where those two orange dots are, there was a partition wall there. And so those are columns that are supporting beams. And we probably don't want those columns there now because we want to open that space up and use it as a, it'd be a more functional meeting space. Um, so to the engineering for, to remove those columns is $8,000. So that were, what, what we would need to pay upfront. And the additional construction cost, because it's longer beams, is $5,000. And in that construction of that 5,000 also includes, uh, some casework and a sink. So you've got an area, that yellow box there is a countertop and a sink for, you know, the pastries or the coffee or whatever you, you know, you know, bring into the room. So it's just enhancing that room and making it a better, uh, meeting space. So I, I, I think that's probably a pretty important add if we're shrinking the meeting room on the other end of the building.
Did you say we're taking away some beam?
The two columns, those orange things are, they're support columns for a beam.
But they're not even there yet. So how are we taking away, just adding?
Engineering of that is just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so we've got the building's designed with shorter beams and then supported by a column. And so then the beam, the columns go away and then it needs a longer beam to span that distance. Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. Uh, I think we're getting all the things kind of taken care of that we had issues with. So I like this redesign. The only thing I might add, I, I, so one, I don't know, maybe you're looking for a head nod, remove the pillars. I'm all for it. I hate pillars. I think that it, especially for the amount that it's gonna cost and the difference in, in, in materials, absolutely. With the changes that we've made here, maybe is there a possibility that there's a removable wall there to partition off and create even another little space that you can enter from up here or you can go back down and come back up these stairs to a separate room back there and it could be a big room or it could be into two different sized rooms. I don't know if there's something that we could look at to add that there.
Tell them the partition walls though, is that when you accordion them up, you lose space too.
Yeah, and the other.
Just a thought I'm throwing out. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't. I'm just.
I, I think, because what we had in, in this other room was a large boardroom like table. So I see a, a very large table in that room and it'd be tough to put the accordion wall in the middle, the middle of that big boardroom. It's not a.
I'm having trouble imagining the size of that because this says 225. I, I, I don't know what that means. Um, because the other one shows 203, but when I'm looking at scale, one looks way bigger than the other.
Numbers aren't capacity.
That's more square feet. No.
That's not a square feet?
Uh, okay. And, and so, and this other room was nearly double in size before.
See, it was. And that's why I thought, well, now I, maybe we were, scale was off. So, uh, I was reading numbers that weren't, okay, okay.
Okay, so in totality, we, we have.
One more comment, just going back to the nano, nano walls. Um, our nano walls, when, when I look at the, the pictures you've provided, those are accordion style. So they're not, they're not the kind that retract into the wall.
Yeah, it's similar, similar product to what.
Yeah, powered is my point.
Yeah, they're just glass.
I think so.
Um, okay, so our upfront cost that we're gonna need to pay is 30, all, for the two design elements is $33,000. So I just need you guys to acknowledge that.
Bring us in a minute.
And so Noah will incorporate that into our budget adjustments and then potentially the additional construction costs are $135,000 for, for all of those elements.
50-year building.
Yeah, I just want to have the conversation and not do this in a bath.
We all have to say no go-backs now.
Okay. All right.
No go-back.
All right.
I can say.
All right, sounds good. Well, let's get to our committee reports and we're starting to run out of time here tonight. So, um, economic development tourism, I don't believe.
We did not meet and we meet again September 8.
And if I can, utilities met today. Only one topic on the agenda. You want me to just state what it was? It was the, uh, our way.
Two topics.
Contract. Uh, and we're gonna bring that and to, the recommendation was to go with the Utilities and Trade Commission of Utilities and Transportation Commission option and to bring that to the full council. Um, it, it appears to be a better deal for our residents, uh, in, in that. Is that an accurate statement?
I think that's fine. Um, that'd be good. The other item that we had was we did have an update on Marina Pump Station that is going forward. And, uh, let Dennis talk real quickly, uh, when he gets to his point about the foster pilot, because we do have some good news with that. Uh, not time-wise, but that we're moving forward. That's the report.
So you give that in your staff report when, when we get to you. Um, finance did not meet and transportation, did you guys meet? I don't think so.
I reported.
You wrote a last meeting?
Yep, uh, I will be unavailable during the next meeting. So we can either move it or have it without me.
Okay.
I'm indifferent.
Okay. All right, land use, did you meet?
Not meet, no meet.
Did not meet. Okay, lodging taxes, not meeting advisory, anything to report?
Advisory, September.
Okay. And coffee with council, you guys gave your reports.
Yep.
They were emailed out, got it? All right, to the mayor's report, had a couple of things. Um, we had, was it last week or the week before, um, we had, our directors and manager had facilitated, uh, training related to, uh, reducing burnout. And, uh, the biggest, it would, the, to the person, our biggest cause of stress is our workloads here at the city. And the takeaway from, at the end of the day was there simply aren't enough resources, the staff to the volume of work that we need to perform. And so in many cases, we need to prioritize our work and take on each task on one at a time. Um, at the end of the week, we acknowledge it's okay not to have everything complete as long as we're working as proficiently as we can. Uh, continually fitting 50 hours of work into what's supposed to be a 40-hour work week, uh, is the root cause of our burnout. So. Uh, committing timelines to our internal and external customers is important too. One of the other outcomes of, of this session that we had is all of our departments has mission and value statements. But many of them are a little outdated and so we need to, each department, I'm asking each department to do some, some homework in that, in that area. And, uh, and look at those statements. And I, I really think, um, that can help us with a, a North Star for expectations, the service standards. And then I'm probably gonna hire a facilitator and bring all the departments together for a, you know, a, a joint mission value statement exercise. So, um, so that's something we're, some, we, we're working on and, um, where some of the takeout, takeaways from, uh, the, the session that we had with the facilit, with the facilitator. So it was a really good session. It was a half day. Um, there was a FIFA fan zone meeting last week and Josh Johnson and I attended. A mock, a mock-up of the Bremerton Fan Zone website was shared. Uh, uh, focus on the website is to stay in Kitsap in 2026. It will have all of the events and activities countywide on this website. Uh, which type should be, uh, have a soft launch, uh, at the end of this month. And, and the takeaway I got from it, other jurisdictions, and I communicated with, to Samantha Smith, this, uh, the president of our merchants association. They aren't creating new events, but plan to amplify and market our existing events and making them more special and making sure that, you know, we're marketing them and sharing that so that we can get fans that are attending between the games as well. We want to make sure our events are happening between the games so that we're that draw and that reason for them to get out of, uh, of King County and come over here and visit us. Um, I, uh, there was an email I received about, uh, the library mural and we researched that. It was last touched up in 2009 and the work was performed by a gentleman named Rodney Healing at a cost of $1,200. So, um, I think it's gonna be quite a bit more than that. I've spoken with Rodney. He's retired now and he lives in North Carolina now, but he has family in the area. And he's going to, uh, get back to me in a few weeks, uh, about whether or not, um, he could make it work. Uh, to come back out here, visit some family and, uh, he would travel here in the summer of 2026. And if it's a reasonable cost, I think the library's gonna be around, the current library's gonna be around a few more years. So maybe we want to try to preserve that mural. If, if, if the cost is a few thousand dollars or something. So more, I'll report back more on that after I, I hear. You know, whether he's interested. He, he seemed interested. I'll go talk to my family and when I could come and, you know, so he was an interesting character. Uh, car show, great event this last weekend, 600 cars and we believe over 12,000 people were, were downtown on our waterfront. And when I was walking around, the restaurants and the businesses were packed. It was, it was great to see. Um, our history lesson. So 15 years ago in 1975, council member, uh, Uh, Warren Denzil reported that the Parks Committee had two, two quotes requiring, uh, regarding. The resurfacing of the tennis courts at Givens and one more is expected to come soon. Now we're rebuilding, uh, completely resurfacing those and changing their use, but it's not the first time this happened. Those courts have been around for more than fifty years because we were. Resurfacing them in nineteen seventy five. Seventy five years ago in nineteen fifty, the city attorney reported that, uh, he had nearly completed all the. Work ready to the new ordinance pertaining to fortune tellers. So I didn't know fortune tellers were a problem in our community and need to be regulated, but in nineteen fifty it was. So. And we've talked a lot about that water reservoir. So a hundred years ago in nineteen twenty five, the city council held a special meeting to award the contract to Chicago Bridge and Iron Works for six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. To build a one hundred and twenty five thousand gallon steel water tank. So. That was a topic in a number of their council meetings. So that ends my report. So we are to. Staff reports, Dennis, you've got something on foster and maybe some other things?
Yep. I got a few things. Janine's going to pull up a picture. Um, it's been just over a year since our, uh, public works crews, uh, separated. So we have dedicated crews now. And I just want to share a success, a story as we get ready to dedicate the new tennis courts at Givens and pickleball courts. Um, this is a project, uh, if we can zoom in a little bit there, you can see our shelter. Uh, it was in need of some repair. So. We have a parks employee. He wanted to give the acknowledgement to all the people who worked on the project and not himself, but our crew lead, John Hubbard. Went out and had, uh, the materials for this roof donated. So, uh, that was a huge benefit city. He worked closely with Noah and finance and, um. They have this, this, the, the shelter repainted. There's still a little bit more paint there. Um, and looking ahead of the dedication that's going to, we're pushing hard for August twenty fifth for the courts. Um, our crews have also totally renovated those restrooms that have been closed for over three years, uh, due, due to vandalism. So the plan is that we're going to open those up during just park hours. And so, um, just to have a better handle on them. So. Great successes with our crews. It's, uh, it's very apparent that the level of service is increasing. So I'm very happy. Um, also want to give an update on our roadside brush, roadside brush cutter. Uh, it is supposed to be here next week. Uh. We're going to be hitting those right aways really hard and getting everything caught up where it needs to be. But we've been without a brush cutter all summer long. So that's our roadside mower. So, uh, good success there.
Um, any, any vegetation we control, we've been doing has been with weed eaters.
Weed eaters, a couple of small mowers when we can, a mini excavator, but it's been, it's been, it's been stressful for our staff and they've done a good job and they've, they've risen to the occasion. So. Uh, they did the, the, the boulevard with the just a ride on mower. So. Everything we can do to get it done. So kudos to our street department that's been working on that. Um. I did want to give an update on the special event. I know the chief's going to have a lot. Um, I had the, uh. The, um, ability to attend a conference with the chief earlier this spring and with also with the clerk. And what goes into these special events, the worst things, the best things, uh, it was very, uh. Eye opening learning and experience. Um, there is so much for all hands on deck there to do. Uh, we see some improvements that we can do. Um, I was very pleased with our traffic control and, and the responses that we had to set that up. There's some enhancements we're going to do next year. Uh. We're going to look at doing outreach when we have our vehicles staged on the end with a tent, similar with the chief had with the police department, just to promote some of our stormwater, some of our, um. Water conservation efforts. So working on that. And the last thing I'll talk about is foster. So. Last week, we had our first meeting with the Department of Ecology. They have foster, they are actively reviewing it. Uh, comments were good. They acknowledged, uh, the body of work that went in there and complimented that. There's going to be some back and forth about what they want to see and what we can do. Uh, we, we have our meeting with the, both the Saquamish tribe and the Squaxanlan tribe on the twenty fifth. And then we'll get a different perspective and we'll keep working together and develop the inter locals as we need with the city of Bremerton and West Sound. So things are moving. Thank you.
No.
Uh, two things I kind of want to report on, uh, one first, our water meter, smart water meter project. Uh, we're still, uh, working through that, but we are in our second billing cycle of using the AMI technology. Uh, so that means that we were able to read all but twenty eight meters, uh, this billing cycle. And those twenty eight meters, we actually sent out crews and they're all pick up with a regular read. So it's not that we had to do manual reads like we had in the past. Uh, there's just a dead zone in our city where we have to send the truck out and drive by and pick up the read as they drive by. So it's incredibly different than what we used to do, uh, take one to two weeks to go out and read all these meters. I'm hoping to have a, a better presentation with some data about what it used to look like with crews, uh, doing billing cycles to what it looks like today. Um, I'm hopefully again, then a couple of billing cycles will be one day, um, all meters read same day, uh, live data billing. So it's. It's quite an improvement. Uh, I like to thank Dennis for his work and, and championing this project with me and, and helping his crews to empower and get there and get these things done. So. Making incredible progress on it. Uh, there's still more work to be done. We still have some older meters that, uh, we will have to replace out. And we'll talk about then mid-year reviews at the part of the twenty twenty six annual budget. Uh, there's old outdated meters that we can't necessarily use the technology with. Um, but it, it's, it's remarkable how far we've come in this one year. And I think Dennis and his crews for that work.
Yeah, the, the, the remaining meters we have are turned into construction projects because they're. Commercial meters, they're serving apartment complexes and they're just, they're not compatible with this technology. So we end up having to go in there and do. Um, pretty significant plumbing projects. So, yeah, we're going to tackle them, but it's going to take time.
So not compatible with SCADA?
No, they're not compatible with the smart meter technology. They're old meter style. We can't just walk up. Change. Yeah.
Director Cracker, what do you know? What have we done with those employees? Have they been repurposed? Cause there were people that literally went around and, and took these mean readings for us.
That's a, that's a question for Dennis and there's plenty of work to do.
Uh, there's not as short as you work, we know that, but right, like, here's a great example of where the city invested in technology that now creates. Capacity to just what the mayor was talking about. Uh, and so we just want to, yeah, I just had a curious question.
So with that resource that has been freed up, we are addressing deferred maintenance that was not getting done and the list is long. And we implemented because council approved the budget to include asset management. We are identifying how do we improve and how do we expand on those levels of services? And the list is long. I assure you and I plan on giving an update in the very near future as we build out those asset management programs. So you can see it firsthand.
Anything else, Noah?
Yeah, the one other topic, um, and the mayor asked me to talk about this, but AI, AI is a popular topic right now. And will continue to be a popular topic. So the mayor asked me to share kind of what we're working on in the city. I'm happy to report that, uh, in April this year, we formed an AI committee consisting of, uh, multiple members from different departments. Every department is represented at the committee. Um, and we began this committee by just first talking and discussing what AI is. And, and trying to raise our level of education about AI, about what is machine learning, what is generative AI, what is agentic AI? All these different terms that you hear out there, but it gets very confusing very quickly. So our first couple of meetings, we just spent talking, defining, looking at videos, truly trying to understand when people say AI, what that means. Um, what we've done since April is that we've identified a subcommittee out of the, the, the parent committee, if you will. Uh, to, to draft and develop a policy for the city. And the policies, uh, are based on, uh, other Washington cities with similar sizes. We're using Gov AI Coalition, which is a coalition of cities and counties across the nation, uh, their templates, as well as WA Tech, which is, um, you know, the state agency that is. Governing states as well as cities on their policies. So we're looking at all these policies, um, templates to craft one for our city. Uh, what's going to be included in this policy is acceptable and responsible use, uh, processes for approving AI tools being evaluated by AI committee. Uh, so we're going to really corral and understand what tools people would like to use and follow that through an AI committee to evaluate the business case for it. And potential risks to see. So we're trying to capture all that information. Uh, we're going to build in, of course, public records and retention policies and practices and what's required. Uh, we're monitoring current AI use as well as future AI use. So kind of getting our arms around, uh, all the potential tools out there and. Uh, developing a list of approved AI tools. Once we get there, um, that, you know, employees could use for specific purposes, once they're approved. Uh, we're talking about how we're, we're identifying business cases that, uh, AI could be used in the city to help us move forward. Uh, again, using technology to, to leverage kind of what we do now to improve that. Um, the policy, we also talked about, uh, training, uh, and in the committee, we really thought that training was important. Uh, training employees on the policy itself, uh, what is acceptable use, whether the processes, if an employee has an interest in AI tool, how do they? Channel that interest to the committee to get that approved to, through the proper channels, as well as training, uh, employees on. The AI tools which will become approved. So at some point we will say, hey, uh, co-pilot is acceptable in this kind of use and we will train employees on what that use looks like. And the things they would need to do using that tool for that purposes. Um, we, we have, uh, also identified training on cybersecurity AI. Um, how to identify, uh, when AI is being used as a phishing tool. Uh, we get hit up a lot in the finance department. And so AI is a bigger threat to entities now. So that's going to be part of the policy, part of the training, part of our IT department. Uh, we continually have to beef up our IT department as we go forward. So lots, lots, lots going on there. Again, uh, beefing up the IT department speaking on. Uh, where, where we were trying to help establish a baseline for same employees to again, understand what AI is. So at some point when we have the policy drafted. Uh, we'll want to talk with each department and define and explain. Uh, we're a part of a group in Tacoma, uh, which is spearheading an AI group, um, to. With cities across the state, which is kind of nice because then you have all the IT departments of all the cities across state, keeping current together. Uh, moving together, looking at different tools out there, just looking at the different policies, what are other cities doing? I'm happy to report that we are not behind other cities. Everybody's in the same boat, talking about the same things at the same kind of draft stages and contemplating these issues. So. Uh, that's really good. Uh, we are also part of the ASIS group, which is actively engaged in dialogues again on policy and use cases. Again, ASIS is. Um, a different IT agency across the state, similar to how we have finance organizations and public works organizations. ASIS is an IT organization. And so we are very much engaged with them to see what they're proposing as an organization to manage, monitor. Um, business cases, all those kinds of concerns. One use case that we're kicking around and I, and I think it's, uh, it's been used elsewhere, other cities, other entities, uh, school districts in particular, I know have used this, but we're talking about an AI assistant. Um, again, we haven't, we're not there yet. So, uh, but what that would be look like is a chatbot almost on the website. Uh, which is, um, sandboxed with only our data, which means that'd be only our municipal code, our ordinances. So the chatbot can only look to our information. Uh, and, and just remember, from the public could ask a question, the chatbot will look to our information to answer the question in a more user friendly format. As opposed to here's the website for the port municipal code, please go to chapter thirteen and read through it and try to find your answer. So that's a use case that I've seen, uh, school districts use. Um, and I think that will be a more common agentic AI. That will be used. So that's a business case. We're trying to talk with other entities about using it, how they've done it, how do they set up the sandbox and the parameters? And most importantly, what is the data going into it? Cause it's me very important that we understand the data going in. That's clean data, accurate data and good data. So lots of issues surrounding it. Um, we're not there yet. We're at the very beginning stages of drafting a policy. We'll bring that policy forward before the whole AI committee to get their take on it. Um, and get their input before we can move that forward.
So I have a couple of questions. So how are you monitoring current AI use?
So co-pilot actually has that built in as a part of its, its, its rollout for government entities that the IT department, um, can monitor. When they log into co-pilot under your municipality on your device that we can actually see what questions are regenerated to. Now, at this point in time, there's only, I think, five co-pilot licenses that we have and it's all within the AI committee. So we're kind of testing that right now. Uh, it's not, uh, rolled out to the whole city. And so it's very limited use. Um, but, you know, my IT manager reports on it frequently of what we got.
So that's just co-pilot, like chat GPT. You guys are like John had mentioned, the shadow use of that. Um, that probably is not being monitored.
No, no.
Okay.
And so we're hoping to address that again with this policy in the next month, and then we'll be able to actually. Kind of lock down all of that for our employees.
So this seems like a really large lift. Like I could see what you talked about taking a couple of years since you've got all these other partners. Um, will we be getting, uh, milestone reports on how this is moving along or?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct my assumption as to how long this is going to take.
I, I would, we are hoping, the community is hoping to have an AI, an AI policy out this year within the next two months. Um, so yeah, that's a large lift, but having the policy is the first spot, the first step.
Okay.
And having employees understand.
And I, right, we're going to have a baseline policy and then as it's a work in progress.
Yeah. And once we have the policy, then you're really corralling and employees know what to expect, know what's acceptable use. And I know if there is a tool that they're interested in, what would be the proper channels to get that approved or looked at or evaluated? And maybe it's not appropriate. Um, once it gets through the channels of the AI committee, IT department, and then the managers themselves to actually evaluate whether that's something they would accept in their department.
That's great that, that you're collaborating with others and others will have model policies, perhaps that we could look at and save a lot of time. That's very exciting. That's scary.
It's scary.
And it's big lift, it's a big lift.
I've been talking to Noah about this.
Yeah, well, it's like John had mentioned, it's happening whether we like it.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Anything else?
That's up to me.
Chief?
Thank you. And I'll try to be brief. Um, yeah, the crews went, uh, very well this weekend. Glad that, uh, we were able to, to make some agreements with the, the event organizers. Cause it's a really fun event and I do know I enjoy being down there. Um, I, I do want to direct your attention to the, the memo that I left up on your desk. I was just looking for some guidance from this council. We were unaware if, or uninformed rather, if FEMA was going to open up their port security grant. There was no indication from the federal government for the entire year. And then they let us know, by the way, it's opening August first. That was on July thirty first. Uh, so we have been working on a project with South Kitsap Fire Rescue for about the last twelve, fourteen months. We've identified that having a joint vessel is probably a wise idea. They have twenty two miles of shoreline. We cover Sinclair inlet. Um, our vessel is aging. It is seventeen years old. The council knows we have had to come to for some significant repairs. We expect to place at least one additional engine in the next, uh, eighteen to twenty four months. Uh. We have received a soft quote and, um, proposal from Safeboats. Um, the reason we went with them is that we already have a maintenance contract and they're, they're local. That proposed vessel is a thirty three footer, which is one foot longer than the one that we currently have. It would be, um, a level two or level three. For the National Fire Protection Association standards, that means that level two is fifteen gallons per minute and level three is thirty gallons per minute. Uh, part of the, uh, grant also requires that it has seabird capabilities so that the, uh, vessel itself and the operators are protected from chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear and environmental. Uh, the port security grant is seventy five thousand dollar coverage. Uh, the anticipation is with, with the tariffs and the increasing costs, we're looking at about one point two million dollars for the vessel. That would leave, if we partner with, uh, South Kitsap Fire, it would be twenty five percent. So about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for, um, organization. Um, we have received a soft quote from Safe Boat. They do not purchase vessels back that they anticipate between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sale of our vessel. Um, that would obviously either completely zero out that cost or be very, very close. Um, we have been working on the grant since it's due Friday, uh, but I wanted to, to bring this issue up to council to ensure that. The, the work that we are doing is supported by you and you would like us to move forward. Um. We will certainly work on the ILA or the MOU with them. The goal would be that it is a fully shared vessel so that it's not what we have now currently, which is when we go out. Uh, uh, we may bring, uh, a, I'm sorry, a paramedic or a member of the fire department with us. But if they need to go out, we have to pilot the boat. The goal would be that we can share costs such as the maintenance cost, they would take care of their own fuel. And they could take it out when needed, just as we would take it out when we needed. I'll take any questions if you have.
Yes, sir.
Who gets priority if the city needs it and they need it at the same time? Is it first come, first served or?
Uh, that would be worked out in the MOU, um, but it would also be depending on the, the issue that needs to be triaged. Life safety will obviously come first.
I just wanted to thank the, um, thank you and your staff for having a station at the cruise and water. That was very, very nice. I saw a lot of people grabbing water because it was a really hot day.
Yes, it was.
Thank you for that.
Of course.
If you're trying to put a bow on this. Chief, okay, go ahead. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, I was just going to say, uh, to, you know, it sounded like the cruise went great. Um, I would just ask that if there's any lessons learned from you or Dennis that we approached the Saints earlier than later. About things that need to be changed. So we don't kind of get down the rabbit hole. We seem to got. about things that need to be changed. So we don't kind of get down the rabbit hole we seem to got down last year, this past year. So that would be great if we touched base with them earlier. Thank you.
Yes, our after action report is, is hopefully gonna be done the next couple of weeks. And we intend to sit down with them. We met with them beginning in January of this year. We're gonna start meeting with them as soon as that after action report is completed.
Thank you. And on this boat issue, the chief just, we want your, you know, we're intend to apply for a grant. Likely our, the sale of this boat will cover our portion of the grant, but we'll need to cash flow that. We can't sell our boat until we have a new boat. So, you know, so one first step is we got to get an ILA with the fire department and work out those details. And then apply for the grant. And then if it's accepted, then we'll be back before you that to accept the grant and then award a contract for the purchase of a boat or construction of a boat. So everybody comfortable with that process?
Absolutely.
Very much pleased. All right.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Jeanine.
Really quick. So Jorge is out till the twenty fifth. She is on a well deserved cruise. So in the meantime, if you need anything tomorrow, please definitely, you know, let me know, email me. Really quick regarding the council, the next one is September sixth. So council member Rose Pepe has said he will attend. So if anybody else just.
All right. We've got a couple of directors online. We got Ms. Archer. Do you have anything to share?
I'm not this evening. Thank you so much.
Mr. Vaughn, I know you're, you're looking online too. Do you have anything you'd like to share this evening?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our director reports. So we will get to citizen comments. If you'd like to step to the microphone, identify yourself for the record. And you have three minutes to address the council.
Well, my name is Rick Boston and I own a two acre property here in Port Orchard. We have a old sixty five year old house on there that's about fourteen hundred square feet. And it's got a garage building that's about fourteen hundred square feet. And I converted it to a commercial property twenty years ago to kind of be my retirement income. And fifteen years ago, we, and it was annexed into Port Orchard. So and I kind of feel inconsequential to even be here. I'm hearing all this important stuff and my little thing is kind of kind of nothing except that it is destroying me. So I did hear you guys mention that you really like to see good government to take care of you. Fifteen or nineteen thousand citizens here. So I'm just one of them and I can give you a little feedback. Little perspective of what's happened to me from this city. So it appears to me that the city that is being run by staff people hate the people that live here in this town. They despise small business owners who provide services and employment. And they're utterly focused on driving investment by small business out of this city. And this pattern is becoming known by every businessman that I know in this town. So why do I say this? I mean, you guys have heard all this positive stuff all day and here I'm telling you my little problem. Well, last November, I had a tenant move out of this house about every three to five years. They, they grow in size from the small facility and then they, they move out and get a bigger facility somewhere. Sometimes in Port Orchard, sometimes somewhere else. Anyway, last November, one tenant moved out and a new tenant moved in. And so on December tenth, that new tenant had the city come out and do an inspection because he applied for a UNO. You know, use and occupancy, occupancy. Basically, it's, it was an office building. Steve and John were there. Now Nicole and Mary are gonna be there. Anyway, the tenant had done a few things in the building. And so they told us to fix six things, basically. One, it had these cubicles in the, in the great room that made two office cubicles and they were.
Mr. Austin, I know the light isn't working, but your time is, is.
Okay.
Sorry, seventeen seconds.
Oh, anyway. It don't, it only took us a matter of minutes, hours to fix the various things they wanted, but the building is still vacant now ten months later. Because they told me I couldn't occupy it until they gave me an okay. So, so far I've lost thirty four thousand dollars in rental income. I've had to pay sixty or seventy six hundred dollars to an architect that they demanded to be involved. Cause we raised the partitions a few inches. And there's no way anybody can survive this. No, no person like me. My, my, uh, my social security won't, won't pay the taxes. So there's, on this building, there's no safety issues or any issues at all. City Council Eric Warden and Heidi Fenton toured this property last January and they saw it. It was fine. It was beautiful little building. The architect has verified that it all satisfied. And I'm here just simply to beg mercy. I've done everything the city people asked. I'm just hoping somebody can take charge and get it solved. I mean, ten months, cause, cause somebody changes occupancy.
Sir, your time's up. Thank you for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we can't do that.
I just want to say one other thing. That is, I heard you guys mentioned your staff feels that they're, they're overworked and, you know, really busy and you need more staff. The trouble is your staff creates phony work. They make absolute mountains out of tiny molecules.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Robert Showers. See now that's a fine example of a gentleman sitting here for almost four hours, coming up to get some questions from you guys and not getting any answers. And then you cutting short. And there's no reason why he couldn't have had my three minutes. Is there a rule on that?
Yes, sir.
I would like to see that in writing. Cause there's a lot of, there's a lot of rules I hear, but I never see them in writing and I've asked for them. And I'd just like for you guys to take a look at your guiding principles, which I don't agree with, but I'll use them against you tonight. Because you're saying, are we building positive connections with our community? Well, no, you're not. And again, that's a fine example. If you don't give people an answer or an opportunity, where are they gonna get their answers from? I have emailed some of you guys, never got an answer. I have left phone calls to engineers, never got an answer. The only people that really answer me is Janine, Brandy will call me or answer me. But I never get anything from anybody else. And I don't know what the problem is. And I agree with this gentleman here. There is a staff problem. There is a problem with people not knowing what they're supposed to be doing in their own job. Cause they can never give you an answer. It's always, well, I'll have to check on that and get back with you. Well, nobody ever gets back. So I'm gonna send an email with my issues to you guys. And I hope I get an answer from somebody and not just lead me on to another director or another committee or something like that. I like to just get an answer from whoever I direct that to. Because it is frustrating. And it's just that the community is not, they're just not, they're not seeing any results of any of the requests that they're giving.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online wishing to address the council?
Yeah, we do have one member of the public and. Okay.
And if you're wishing to address the council, please use the. If you can identify yourself for the record, you have three minutes to address the council.
Yeah, my name is Vlad and I've been a member of the Port Orchard community for a very long time and I'd just like to say.
Thank you, Jean.
Was it first?
All right. Anyone else online, Jeanine? All right. Anything for the good of the order? We got about two minutes here before our.
Oh, I was gonna say for the night market is this coming Saturday from six to ten at the sixteenth.
Okay, and Mr. Morgan?
I just wanted to say shout out to the Saints, my Rotary Group, Port Orchard PD, South Kids Fire and Rescue. What an amazing showing for this community this weekend. Much thanks to all who went there. And I'd like to reserve some, I'll save it for next time, but I want to talk about FIFA.
Okay, sounds good. All right. And our meeting is adjourned for this evening.
Bye bye.
Are you kind of acting as the secretary?
Yeah, yeah.
There's some copies to give to them. Basically what I've said, so they got the data.
Did you?
I don't know if anybody cares, but.
No, I will send this out for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.